We've got your tax credit money to do.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Tempe City Council Work Study Session for April 6th here in the Herry E. Mitchell Government Center. First item on our agenda is a call to the audience for the issue review session items. Audience members have up to three minutes to address the city council. If you would like to speak on an item, you can please fill out your speaker's card, which is in the back of the room. Please come forward and hand it to our city clerk, and I'll call your name and it's your turn to speak. I just want to announce and recognize former Mayor Neil Giuliano is here with us. Neil, welcome back in the council chambers. With that, I do have some public appearance cards, and the first one is former Mayor Neil Giuliano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's good to see you all. I'm here tonight to talk briefly on issue 2B, which is the streetcar project update. I looked over the staff report, which was well done, thoroughly done, as the staff always does in partnership with Valley Metro. And the particular concern that I have is the topic of off-wire scenarios for downtown Tempe, which is great, except the streetcar doesn't stay in downtown Tempe. The streetcar comes further south, goes around the Gammage Curve, and heads a little bit east. And there does not appear to be any scenarios presented that would include a review of or discussion of or consideration of an option of going off-wire around the Gammage Curve. And I would only ask you to consider for two things about that. One, Gammage is, I think, clearly the most architecturally significant building in the city of Tempe, and I would even argue probably the most significantly architectural building in the region, if not one of the few, the handful, in the state of Arizona. And I think some extra consideration should be given for that. And number two, there are 21 single-family homes, full disclosure, mine is one of those, that face either east across Mill Avenue or south across the curve and 13th Street. And when I looked at all this and saw that there were, first of all, it's called only the scenarios for downtown, and the streetcar doesn't stay in downtown, goes south of downtown a little bit, and the homes that are in that area and Gammage, and I didn't see, I looked kind of in the back kind of story of this, and it didn't seem like there was ever a council discussion or option about going off-wire around the Gammage Curve roughly from 11th Street around the curve to Forest or College, but you probably wouldn't need to go Forest. I don't know the details. I don't know the engineering. I don't know all of that kind of information, but I didn't see a conversation or a discussion about that kind of an option, so I thought I would bring it to your attention and let you all consider that. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ernie Nichols. Welcome back, Mr. Nichols. It's been a while. Please say your name and place of residence for the record.
Ernie Nichols, 322 East Broadway Lane. I'm here to, first, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for the new eight-foot-high masonry wall out in front of our house. It's very nice. It's really changed our lifestyle. We look at a blank wall, true, but we're not looking at all of the traffic. So, thank you. And then we're also enjoying the Palverdi, Wilme and Palverdis out on Broadway. So, you guys did a good job. I'm here primarily on setting speed limits between rural road and Mill. I'd like for you to consider reducing that speed limit to 25, 35, excuse me, 35 instead of the 40. Broadway, as you probably noticed, is very heavily used, and most of the time you can't drive 40 miles an hour anyway. So, it does affect a lot of other things by having it 35 rather than 40, because College Avenue and Broadway, that is a very busy street pedestrian and bicycle. So, I'd like for you to consider that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Zach DeBrine, DeBrini? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Right.
DeBrue?
Right.
Oh, it looks like I'm there.
Thank you for seeing me. I actually had a couple of questions regarding item 2D, the fifth street, streetscape traffic comment. After I was reading the presentation, I saw that they're basically increasing the numbers of like shade and stuff by 15% or by a certain percentage. And I'm wondering where those initial numbers are coming from and kind of what data sets are being considered in coming up with those numbers and if those data sets are available to the public right now.
Okay. We'll get you that information. Thank you. Next, Mr. Martinez. Mario Martinez.
Good evening, or good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. I am here, excuse me, my name is Mario Martinez. I live and work in Tempe. My children go to school here. Speaking as a Tempe resident, taxpayer, and voter, I'd like to say that we need municipal services that are professionally performed by qualified municipal employees. I am speaking in regards to item 2C, which is the code of conduct, and I'd like you to consider the following information. When a woman in my neighborhood is tragically murdered in a domestic violence situation and the authorities determine that the child in that domestic relationships attends the same school as my children, who are the ones that make sure that the children are safe while the suspect is still at large? Was it the Tempe police in conjunction with the Tempe Zone personnel, or was it Kobe Granville? Or is Kobe Granville the same council member who votes to outlaw sitting on the sidewalk and then turns right around and tells the citizens to violate the same law in order to evaluate the police enforcement equity for this ignorant idea? When a person experiences a life-threatening medical emergency while shopping in Tempe, who are the individuals who, who are the individuals who helped this individual get medical attention? Was it the Tempe firefighter paramedics, or was it Kobe Granville? Or is Kobe Granville the same council member who constantly disparaged the unions that the firefighters freely choose to join? Okay? In the current report by the outside council, Kobe is quoted as using fecal expletives to abuse the city legal staff in what is supposed to be, I emphasize supposed to be, a professional legal meeting. Okay? In these meetings, can a member of the city legal staff use fecal expletives to describe Kobe's legal opinions? Of course not. But that is exactly what Kobe does when he routinely abuses our city employees. This is wrong. Kobe has a history of mistreating our well-qualified city employees and acting in a sleazy fashion. If Kobe violated the code of conduct, I respectfully demand that this duplicitous public official finally be held accountable for his abusive actions by the rest of the city council. Thank you.
Next is Cass Olmstead. Did I pronounce that correctly? Did I pronounce that correctly, Olmstead?
You did.
Okay.
So, I came in today because I wanted to talk to the council about the speed limits around the high schools. In Tempe, our speed limit is 35 miles an hour 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. I think it's overkill. I don't have any problem. If you go to other cities, they have flashing lights, speed limit is 35 or 25 or whatever it is when the light is blinking. So, I'm trying to figure out why Tempe feels it needs to be 365 days a year at midnight when obviously there are no high school students present. It's, you know, I was PTO president at Corona for like eight years. I was there when we closed the campus. We have closed campuses, so it's not like the kids are in and out all day long, crossing the road. They can't leave the campus until they're coming or going from school. So, I'd like the council to reconsider. I think it's an inconvenience to our citizens to do that 365 days a year.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Is anyone else in the audience wishing to address us under any of the items listed on the issue review session? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. The next item on our agenda is item 2A, which is code of conduct. Are you going to present, or we're just going to?
I would be happy. Shields? It's not going green. There it is. I'd be happy to present a summary of what I was retained to do and what my conclusions were, or address any questions that the council has, whichever you prefer.
Just do a brief explanation of what was done, and then we can have a council discussion.
Before that, Mayor?
Yes.
I just, I don't know, and I just defer to you from a conflict of interest standpoint. Should I be here or should I not be here? Do I have a conflict of interest? I candidly don't know, so I'm just deferring to you what I should do.
I believe your presence is fine, but I do believe you have a conflict of interest in terms of rendering any sort of vote or input as to what should be done in response to the investigation.
Okay. So, do I get to speak but not vote because we don't vote here?
I do not believe that this is the proper venue for you to speak as far as factually what happened, because that was what the investigation is about.
Sure. So, for example, so...
Mr. Shields, can you come down to this chair right here?
I appreciate that, Mayor. I'm mayor.
Mark's man.
We're in a meeting.
So, to answer your question, first of all, clearly there's a conflict of interest. There's a state statute that says that if you have a vested interest in the outcome of anything like this...
Speak into the microphone.
Okay. So, first of all, there's a state statute on point...
You can just look at us. You don't have to worry about that. There's TV screens.
I need to swivel. Somewhere over there.
No, don't swivel. Don't swivel. Look straight at the house.
All right. There is a state statute that says that if you have a vested interest in the outcome of this, you can't render a vote. As to whether now is an opportunity for you to explain to the council certain viewpoints you have as to why...
I assume that if I had a conflict of interest, I assume during the call to the audience would have been the time for me to do that. I think, for example, previously, Councilwoman Ellis, when she would have a conflict of interest in E session or something, she would get up and leave E session, and so she just wouldn't even be there. And so, I don't know if I should just not even be here, or if I'm, I just don't know. That's why I'm asking.
No, I think it's a fair question. I think it's your prerogative as to whether you should be here. It's clear to me via state statute, you cannot vote on what should ensue in connection with the conduct.
Okay. Does that also, I assume, means that I should not speak?
I believe it would be inappropriate for you to speak because...
That's fine. I just wasn't sure what I was supposed to do.
Okay. There's no clear-cut law on that that I'm aware of. But the purpose of the investigation was for me to conduct the fact finding, render the fact finding to the board, apply the facts to the code of conduct and to the ethics handbook, and so that's been done.
Okay. Then if I could ask one more question, Mayor? Then I would defer to this body, you know, it's up to you all. What you would prefer, I'm happy to do.
Councilmember Keating, then Councilman Akivie, then Councilman Shapiro.
It seems to me, though, that Councilman Granville should be allowed to defend himself or, you know, say something in defense of himself, though. I mean, I don't, to, to, I get not being able to like sway the vote or be able to vote in the actual decision, but to at least give his point of view to be able to speak, I think, would be appropriate in my mind.
Councilman Akivie?
I had that same concern, that wouldn't we want to hear from him if we're trying to come to a consensus about what action to take? But if you think it's legally not permissible...
I don't think it's legally impermissible at all. The concern would be that you're going to be hearing facts from Mr. Granville that the other individuals who were interviewed are not going to have a chance to respond to.
I have the memo.
But, you know, it's your prerogative. There's, I don't see, there's no ordinance on point, there's no statute on point. The only statute that is clearly on point to me is the one that prohibits Mr. Granville from actually voting as to what the outcome should be.
That satisfies me, Mayor.
Councilman Shapiro?
And Mayor, I think it's just important to reiterate that we're not actually going to vote on anything tonight, so there would be no potential for violating said statute. I mean, that's, I don't know if you're familiar with our work study sessions, but we don't actually vote. But just a quick question or to your point, I can understand not wanting to, my question was can we ask him questions? And certainly I can understand the piece about not wanting to ask fact-based questions about the incident that occurred, but if we wanted to ask other questions relating to, you know, his mens rea or, or, you know, how he feels about the situation or what his, you know, what he feels about the potential dispositions, those questions would not be things that would even be appropriate for the other people to respond to. Are those types of questions and his answers to those questions perhaps more appropriate than fact-based questions?
I believe so, because in the summary memo that I prepared for you, there's various actions you can take that are short of censure, and I think aptly put, Mr. Granville's mens rea is relevant to which of those options you decide to pursue.
Thank you. Councilman Navarro?
No, and I kind of leave it up to Kobe what his comfort is on this. I just listened to the council. You know, not having everyone here to ask those questions on various things, that kind of worries me if only we get one side and not other side, so I'm kind of a little bit, to your point, Councilmember Shapiro, I don't know if I can agree with just hearing one side, I guess, because it's a perception to the public that looks like we're just treating on one side.
Can you please introduce yourself for the record?
That'd be a good idea. My name is Burr Shields. I'm an employment lawyer here in Phoenix. Been at it for about 30 years, and I was retained in January to conduct the investigation in regards to the incident on January 11th.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Armando Savage.
No, thank you, Mayor. I guess I would just say a couple of things in regards to, I agree with Councilmember Navarro that, you know, we did seek outside counsel, and I really do appreciate the input and the investigation that you conducted. I know it was fair and equitable there at the time, and I do worry about just being able to hear one other side to that moving forward. So, I think based on the facts that we have before us, you know, I'm confident that we can have some really solid discussion and then figure out what our action will be moving forward. So, thank you for that.
Okay. So, what we have before us, there was an outside investigation that was done. It was presented to us by Mr. Shields, and the way our process worked, we have it, it's, we passed an ordinance back in 2009 of a code of conduct that was signed by then-former Mayor Hugh Holman, and we have a workflow chart of what happens when we, when there is an issue that arises, it goes through the process, and ultimately comes back to the city council. And that's what's been described for us. There was an investigation, so there are some options that we have in our memorandum, our memo of what happened on January 11th. It's an investigation.
Good, Mayor. Just if there is a potential conflict of interest, I would rather not be sitting here because if there's a conflict, I shouldn't be sitting here in my mind. That's my only thing is, it's a little bit weird...
You know what, Councilman Navarro, I honestly agree with you, but that's up to, you're the only one that can make that choice.
No, no, out of an abundance of caution, I'd rather, is it potential for a conflict, and I don't want to be sitting at a conflicted table, but I will be back shortly, or not shortly. I guess that's up to you all. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have, we have the memo before us. It was an investigation done concerning this matter. There's a report that was dated February 16th after conducting various interviews. There was a conclusion to the report from Mr. Shields, and I don't know if you could state the conclusion?
Sure.
And then list the different options? Yes, Councilmember Akivie?
Mr. Shields, before you go into, I think it's important to note for the public that this issue didn't come to council, and we made a decision to investigate, that it was, it was driven by our internal processes, and we first learned about it when the investigation was complete.
So, to Councilman Akivie's point, when I talked about the process, there was incident that happened in January 11th, 2017, regarding Councilman Granville and some city staff. With that being taken place, from that meeting, there was some discomfort, so then a complaint was processed through our process. An investigation resulted from that complaint, and now we are here today to discuss the facts of that complaint and that investigation.
And the appropriate sanction.
And the appropriate measures to take as we move forward.
Correct. And if, I'd be happy to go over any aspects. I can start from scratch and summarize it within a couple of minutes.
That would be helpful.
Sure. So, my first communication with the city was via a memo on January 27th. I then met with the deputy city attorney to learn what the issue was and the scope of my investigation. It was at that point that I was provided with various documents, including the Tempe City Charter, the Resolution 2009.126 that you referenced, Mayor, and the City of Tempe's Ethics in Our Workplace Manual. So, my first task was, I was told that the event occurred on January 11th, 2007 during a work-study session, and my first task was to figure out what happened, who said what. I then, I interviewed five of the seven people that were present, four of which I interviewed in person, and my conclusions as to what was said at the meeting were really, there was no issue of fact. Everybody was on the same page as to what happened, including Mr. Granville. And what happened was this. A discussion ensued between Mr. Granville and a representative of the city attorney's office. It went back and forth, I think the consensus was for about 30 minutes, and it got contentious. And at one point, Mr. Granville used an expletive in reference to the opinion that the assistant city attorney was rendering. That made the assistant city attorney feel, as I mentioned in my report, humiliated that her, that her reputation was being trashed in front of the attendees, and she also feared, the city attorney also feared, retribution if we're opposing the conduct. So, those facts are uncontested. It's not a complicated situation factually. Applying those facts then to the resolution which adopts by reference the ethics in our workplace handbook, I was asked to render an opinion as to whether a violation of anything in those documents occurred, and I concluded yes. And in a nutshell, and this is in my summary, the conclusion was that Mr. Granville treated the assistant city attorney in disrespectful and disparaging manner, and that violates the various provisions of the Ethics in Our Workplace Handbook. It violates the, an actual provision in Tempe City, Tempe Personnel Rules, which are adopted by Resolution 406, or excuse me, Section 406B3, which is incorporated into the resolution. Bottom line, abusive attitude, language, behavior, disrespectful conduct towards a staff member is prohibited according to those documents, and that was the conclusion in a nutshell. From there, I explained in my initial report of February 16th and then the subsequent sort of truncated memo that I prepared for you, that the maximum penalty the council can impose is formal censure, and that would have to be accomplished via resolution. There are lesser forms of sanction that the council can impose: a letter of concern or a letter of reprimand, and the criteria for those are, actually, because there's no ordinance on point, I borrowed the criteria for those lesser forms of discipline from the Arizona Medical Board, which deals with these types of situations on a regular basis. And so, the range in terms of options, nothing, letter of concern, letter of reprimand, formal If you want to be creative and think of something in between one of those four categories, certainly nothing in the law that prohibits it, but as far as some precedent on which to base your opinion, I think those would be the four options.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Akivie?
So, I do have a question for you, Mr. Shields. So, in, this is a redact, some redacted information, but a publicly released memorandum. You mentioned communicating with Chuck Ahoy. He's one of our city attorneys. I also learned that four City of Tempe employees have expressed concerns to their supervisors about Mr. Granville's treatment of them. One such complaint appears to have been informally resolved through internal mediation. The other three individuals did not believe Mr. Granville's conduct was sufficiently egregious so as to warrant participation in this investigation. Since some of the recommended actions involve repetitive behavior, can that information be considered in our discussion, or should it not be since it hasn't been, haven't been investigated by you or in this process?
So, it's clearly hearsay, and in an administrative setting, hearsay is not admissible, but it's, but, or hearsay is not per se inadmissible, but you consider it for, you can consider it for whatever weight you want to give it. I think that that's somewhat unreliable information, because those people did not want to participate in the investigation itself. Yeah, I think it's reasonable to conclude that they did at some point complain, because that information came to me through the city attorney. And I think it strains credibility that the city attorney would make that up, frankly. And, but what we tried to do, or what I tried to do, is if there indeed was a pattern, provide those who experienced similar conduct with the opportunity to participate, and they declined. So, I think that's telling. And so, I would take that portion of my report much less strongly than the description of what happened from those who actually attended that meeting.
And the reason, the reason you were, you were hired to do this investigation, that was because the person that was making the complaint was in the city attorney's office, the city attorney's, city attorney's office would typically be the agent of doing the investigation, so that's why you were brought in?
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? Councilman Shapiro?
Just one quick follow-up question, Mayor. You said that that's telling, and I think you said other things to sort of describe what you mean by that, but I would just like some clarification. When you say it's telling, what do you mean by that?
Good question. I think that it, so, one of the criteria that you must analyze is how serious is the conduct, both on July, or excuse me, on January 11th and at some other time. I would contend that since, that what I meant by telling is that if those people viewed the conduct as egregious or serious, one inference is that they would want to participate, and they chose not to. So, and I'm just, as a lawyer who tries and arbitrates cases, that level of hearsay, I don't think should be given considerable weight.
Thank you. Councilman Navarro?
Just a question, if through the process, and obviously I don't think we decided tonight, but through the process, behavior still consists or still goes on, and is, is what we do tonight just, and if this topic were to come up again, is it the same process or does it go to another level?
If, yeah, the conduct was of a similar nature, meaning mistreatment of a staff member, you'd be going through this process again. That's what the resolution provides.
Councilman Shapiro?
To Councilman Navarro's point, and I just want to clarify this, my understanding is that the highest penalty that this council could dispense with to a fellow council member is... is censure. And so even if they're, and so if, if, if we were to go through this process again, God forbid, formal censure would still be the highest penalty. It's not like there's escalating penalties.
Right, right. And that's why I wanted clarity on.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good question. Thank you for asking.
Well, one.
Cubey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I think is important when looking at, and I know this is the medical board, we don't have any precedent for this in Tempe, but it says the issue, activity issue does not involve issues of serious moral or ethical lapses in conduct or repetitive issues. So, it's.
What's my interpretation of that?
Yeah, maybe.
Can I grab it?
Yeah.
How serious was it? And is it repetitive? Two separate criteria for you to consider. And I think, to the councilman's point, mens re is an important consideration when you assess the seriousness, you know?
And can you define mens re for us?
State of mind.
Unlegal scholars?
No, state of mind.
Yeah, okay.
You know? And, and it does, you know, you can take a look at it from a couple different perspectives. To use that terminology in that setting implies a state of mind. And so, you're going to have to use your own sort of judgment as, almost like a quasi-juror, to decide where on the seriousness spectrum that lands. What was, what was actually said? What was the purpose of being said? And then, whether there's repetitive conduct like this, I don't think the evidence in my report is strong on that point, because all we have is, are some hearsay allegations that have not been substantiated. Can I answer your question? I'm not trying to step around it.
Councilman Navarro.
And then, I may, for the city manager, is there, is the city manager still hearsay if complaints do come to the city manager about conduct of any council member? Is that hearsay?
Yeah. I believe that you, the council is restricted to what's in my report.
Yep.
As to this decision-making process.
Are restricted to the report to think about repetitive issues, though? If we've witnessed a repetitive, an issue, say in a council meeting, is that something we can consider in our decision? If we witnessed disrespectful behavior towards an employee in a formal council meeting, would that qualify as repetitive?
Do you personally experience something along these lines?
Or just witnessed it?
Or witnessed it?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's fair game for, I don't think it's appropriate for a discussion at this point.
Okay.
But, you know, like Famous Case says, you're not required to undergo a lobotomy just because you make a decision. So, the information that's in your head can guide you as to the seriousness of this particular offense, and whether it is indeed repetitive. I don't think that's appropriate for a discussion, though, at all, because that was not part of the investigation.
Councilmember Shapiro.
I have a question to that point. So if we are to consider our own experiences as individuals, and our own recollections as individuals, aren't we then, as a panel, making decisions based on different sets of evidence? And is that okay?
I think it is okay, because what you're here to assess is repetitiveness and seriousness. And how can you, you know, wipe out your own memories in that regard? So, it's, it's a common sense response to your question, as opposed to a legal one?
All right. Let me just try to bring some of this stuff together. You know, we often say, you know, Tempe is a community that cares. We have an anti-discrimination ordinance, and we have a code of conduct. I mean, we take great pride in, as the City of Tempe, their employees, yesterday, council member Cubey and I, with the work of Councilmember Shapiro and Vice Mayor Adano Savage, we had an equal pay celebration. And we celebrate our diversity. We celebrate inclusiveness. We celebrate how we treat one another. And that's what's known in Tempe. Whether it's inside the city hall or outside the city hall, this is what Tempe is known for. And it's unfortunate that we're in the position we're in right now. However, what's before us, it was an investigation, it was a complaint driven by a city employee who, that individual felt there was something that they weren't treated properly. An investigation is before us, we have it, we have some alternatives of what we can do, to the extent that Councilmember Shapiro mentioned and Councilmember Navarro. The maximum issue that we can do is a formal censure. It's up to us to figure out what that lies in. And then there's also a letter of reprimand, and there's a letter of advisory letter. And there's something that we can look at. Or we can come up with something different, that's up to this body. I think, based on the information that we have, not doing our own, talking to individuals, that's not what we're supposed to do, because this was an outside investigation with the materials presented to us, that we have before us some alternatives or some choices for us to make if we do wish to move forward. And I would look to the council regarding the information that's before us, to see where this council would like to go in relates to this issue regarding this investigation. Councilmember Cubey.
So, I mean, do we want to start from do nothing and see where we feel about that? And just, and then?
I mean, obviously, something happened, so.
Right, right.
And we can't take this lightly, because it came to this level.
Right, right.
With that being said, this is the first time this happened.
So, we want to ex off possibility.
But it's also a colleague of ours, and we understand that we, we can't treat anybody any differently.
Exactly.
And we hold our employees to the same standard. You know, so that's important, too.
I think that's a good stretch.
Vice Mayor Adano Savage.
Yeah, I'm totally fine with that, Mayor. Or, you know, I would definitely say we have to do something, and I would support the idea of us kind of trying to decide what that action is moving forward. And I, too, feel, like the mayor said, I think this organization is a remarkable organization, and we have some of the highest caliber staff members. And I think we need to hold ourselves to the highest standard when it comes to inclusiveness, fairness, and respect, not just for each other, but also for our staff that work really hard every single day. And for anybody to fear that their job might be in jeopardy because they cannot tell us that there is an issue or a concern, I mean, to me, that's a problem. So, I do support doing something. And if I had to say, I would actually also X out the letter of concern.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
I would like to also second that thought. I mean, it's, you don't want to see this happen. And this hasn't happened in Tempe to date, and it's disturbing. And when we talk about seriousness, we know that the person who is, who felt victimized, feared losing her job, excuse me, feared losing, was her job, that felt that the council member had trashed, was her reputation, and felt, you know, humiliated. So, we can't second guess that person's feelings. I feel the advisory letter when you read, and I know that we don't have to go by the medical board, we can, you know, we can scrap that and come up with our own system, our own protocol. But when you look at the advisory letter, and this is one, one protocol we can consider, it pretty much says there's kind of insufficient evidence to support the action. And we know from the investigation that there is evidence. So, I feel like number A, advisory letter A, does not apply. And that the violation is minor or technical and not sufficient to warrant the action, to me, that, that does not apply either. Because if you look at the flow chart, it says if, if it's determined to be a violation, a non-charter violation, then you vote for sanction up to public censure. So, to me, the advisory letter is, is not sufficient to, not a sufficient action for tonight. But that's my opinion.
True.
How do you all feel about that? About the advisory letter?
Can I express it as a letter of concern, which I'm?
Councilman Navarro?
No, with that, and I think just to follow up with Councilmember Cubey, it was, I believe in the report, it was agreed by five people that were interviewed.
See, one, two, three, four, five.
That what happened, and even with Councilmember Granville admitting it did take place, and then with the report from the employee that was addressed to, I agree with what's said. I think my, my approach would be the two, the sanction or the letter of reprimand. And I don't know if a public apology is part of that, or has to be part of that, but that is something to consider possibly. Just throwing it out there.
Councilmember Shapiro.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with my colleagues, first, that this is something, as Councilmember Granville has stipulated, that certainly occurred. There's no question as to whether or not it occurred, and whether or not what was alleged to have been said was actually said. So, there's not really a facting question there. And so our, you know, our consideration is sort of what level of repercussion we should exercise. And so I agree that X-ing out the nothing option makes sense. I also agree with Councilmember Navarro that whatever outcome we decide should include an apology. The only part I might depart from is whether it should be public or private. Frankly, he owes an apology to one person, you know? And so whether it's done standing at a lectern, or in a letter individually to that person, or even directly to that person if that person were to be okay with that, obviously that would be their option. I don't really have a preference between those. I think that's, but I don't think necessarily the public apology, I think that's more of just like a publicity thing, or it's, you know, it's not really getting to the point, getting to the root of the matter. So, I do think there should be an apology included, and I, and I do think that the no penalty should be off the table.
Councilmember Keating.
I'm in agreement with my colleagues that we can remove, of course, the do-nothing action and the letter of concern, or was it?
Advisory.
Advisory letter?
All the letters of concern.
You know, and I also agree with Councilmember Shapiro and Councilmember Navarro that an apology should be included, but I'm fine with a private apology.
Okay. So, I think where we are is the letter of reprimand. If you can help draft that, and we'd have to come back to this body so that we can approve that letter.
Yeah. In speaking with Ms. Blaine before the meeting, the procedure would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sonia, but we could, I could draft that for you, return at a subsequent meeting, and we could refine the language.
And the only thing, and this is unfortunate, hopefully this doesn't happen again, I think the consensus is that we look for a letter of reprimand, we'll wait to hear back from you, Mr. Shields, on that, so we can get that agendized and put this behind us. The only thing I would caution is, this does affect not just individuals involved. I think it's bigger than that. I think it affects our organization of what is allowed, what's not allowed, especially given the climate today. And this really shows that we're not going to tolerate this, that we hold ourselves accountable, which is why this process is in place to begin with. So I think it, it's not just the individuals that are involved, it does affect, I think, outside, especially our employees, but also the image that we have within the city, as I stated earlier. The City of Tempe, you know, we are a city that cares and a community that cares. And it's important that we treat everybody with respect, and that's basically what we're asking for. So with that being said, there is, Councilmember Shapiro.
Yeah, Mayor, to that point, I guess I should have clarified. It's not that I'm necessarily opposed to the public apology, I just think the private apology, the direct apology to the person is the most important piece.
Absolutely.
And so, I want to make sure that that's included as a piece of this, wherever we land.
Yeah, and I'm fine with the private, but I'm, I'm saying, the comment that was made about, it says, this only affects some individuals, I think it affects more than that. That's why we're where we are. Councilmember Navarro.
And to Dave's point, and that's why I brought it up. We are public officials, we say things in the public, we do things in the public, we take the targets, we take the hits. That's why I brought up the public apology. I, personally, yeah, an apology to the, to the person is needed. But we are sitting in these seats, and you've got to take ownership.
And to that point, we're going to move forward. Employees are responsible with their managers and their supervisors. As elected officials, our supervisors are our constituents, our residents. So, that's where I think we fall into that. We're going to, yes, Vice Mayor.
No, I just want to say, too, I mean, one thing, I just want to make sure that we're clear about, and I think this is just maybe a message to our Tempe family, that it really does matter. We want everybody to enjoy their job and come to work because they love the City of Tempe and want to be a part of it, and continue to work hard, and not feel that you're belittled or undermined by any means. And if there's an issue or concern, that you can certainly bring it forward, and something will happen. And that's exactly why we're here today. So we minimize the repetitiveness of inappropriate actions. And I certainly agree that we have to hold ourselves accountable and to the highest standards.
So, just to wrap up, so we can have Mr. Shields get some information to us, the advisory letter is not there, the do-nothing option is not equivalent, is not what the council's looking for. So it's only letter of reprimand or formal censure. So, are we looking at a letter of reprimand, or are we looking at a formal censure? Those are the options. Councilmember Cubey.
Well, from what Mr. Shields said, you know, I'm concerned about the whole aspect of repetition and what some of us personally may have witnessed or not. But I'm, you know, I'm also worried, you know, I see what the individuals affected, what that person's perceptions were, which seemed, you know, serious to me. We're in uncharted territory here, it's very clear.
Can I provide some, one piece of info here? Based upon my research, the only time a formal censure like this was rendered against a public official was with the town of Quartzsite. And the, the conduct there was far, far more egregious than the conduct here.
Letter of reprimand. I will score a letter of reprimand.
Okay, I agree with that. You know, I think just to sum up as well, and this is, this is a letter of reprimand to a council member, but it's also, it's also saying that we're, that we respect the law that was passed in 2009, and we know that this applies to us equally to, as to any employee, and we respect our employees above everything, so.
Okay.
So, is there a consensus?
There is consensus. The letter of reprimand, get it back to us, and with an apology.
Deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much for your work.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, can we get Councilmember Granville to come back in?
Oh, really?
Crazy. I just texted him.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm never back there, so I don't know.
All right. Next item on our agenda is our streetcar update. Look at that. I waked up someone in the audience. Mr. Iverson. Welcome, please come on down. We've got some options before us.
Yes.
And we'll have to leave shortly, so I just thought I'd let you know.
There's a plane. And the TV's all into.
You want to? Stop it, Scott, here. There's four of us for the first part here.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor. Members of the council.
Former Mayor Mesa, now Valley Metro's CEO. Honorable.
Honorable.
That's good. Oh, let's not go too far. Yeah. Let's not stretch it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Eric Iverson, Public Works Transportation, City of Tempe. I'm actually here with Mr. Smith, CEO, former mayor of Mesa, and our colleagues at CTE, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
My name's Blake Whitson. I'm a Technical Project Manager and Engineer at CTE.
I'm Dan Rodabaugh. I'm the Executive Director at CTE.
And they were here in the spring of last year, early, early spring of last year, to help us out on some of the discussions about the propulsion for streetcar, of which we are here to provide more information and receive direction from you. In addition to that, we are sharing with you some new configuration for the trackway alignment on Real Soto Parkway, and then just some of our other next steps for the project in general. As, as you all are familiar, as we discussed at the December council meeting and at the February issue review session, these are the four off-wire segments that we have been analyzing, working with CTE, our partners with Brookfield, a vehicle manufacturer that's been selected, and Valley Metro staff, as well as Tempe staff, to understand all four of these. The first one is the Mill Avenue scenario from Ninth and Mill stop to the Hayden Ferry Lakeside stop for the wireless section. The second scenario two is the, includes the Mill Avenue location as well as Ash Avenue, previously discussed with the council. Scenario three is Mill Avenue with the, what we've been calling the gateways, are the two main intersections to Mill Avenue at Rio and Mill and at University and Mill. And then scenario four is the option that was looking at basically the entire loop of downtown, except for the portion on Real Soto Parkway from Marina Heights to Hayden Ferry Lakeside. And in this analysis, as you all have become familiarized with this, with this project, and that it's, it's a partnership with many different experts, and of course with Valley Metro. So we, we have had the entire team of CTE, Valley Metro, another consultant, LTK, with, through Valley Metro, our design team that's on board with the streetcar project, as well as the vehicle manufacturer, Brookfield, working on this analysis that we're providing with you, to you tonight. And the goal of that is really to get some direction. you, to you tonight. The goal of that is really to get some direction from the council, some finality to that, to that wireless portion in the downtown so we can move forward with our, with our streetcar design. And then we also want to just provide you with information about the operational costs and risks associated with some of the scenarios. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Blake and Dan with CTE to go through the next set of slides.
Thanks, Eric. Mayor, council, thanks for having us back. When studying the off-wire deployment of the streetcar vehicles, there are two issues that we want to fully understand, and one is the battery state of charge. State of charge is an industry term that correlates to the energy capacity or the charge of the batteries on the vehicle. So zero percent correlates to a dead battery, and a hundred percent correlates to a fully charged battery. So you'll see, I will mention some state of charge values, some percentage numbers on the following screen, so that will give you a baseline. Zero is a dead battery, a hundred is a full battery. The risk with battery state of charge operating off-wire is that decreasing the battery state of charge can impact the battery life. So large depth of discharges or discharging a lot of energy from that battery regularly can decrease the life of the battery. Additionally, the manufacturer of the streetcar vehicle, in order to preserve the life of the battery, they want to limit the window or the range of the battery state of charge that you're able to use. So they limit that range from thirty-eight percent to eighty percent. That is a best practice in the industry. That is good and conservative, indicative that Brookfield is cautious, and they want to give you a vehicle that performs for a long life. What that does mean from an operations perspective is when you do hit that thirty-eight percent state of charge, is you begin to derate the performance of that vehicle. So initially, that may, that may mean that the HVAC system doesn't operate at a hundred percent, or the vehicle doesn't accelerate quite, quite as quickly as it usually does, and the battery continues to decrease below thirty-eight percent. Systems may start shutting down, and eventually the vehicle will be stopped. The second issue associated with operating off-wire is raising and lowering the pantograph. So during on-wire sections, of course, the pantograph will be raised, and then when you come to a stop before starting an off-wire segment, you will have to lower that pantograph, and vice versa when you're getting back on, when you're getting back on the wire.
Just so we can, using technical terms, it's that thingamajig that goes up and down that connects the car with the wire.
Thank you.
I knew that was for Councilmember Shapiro. Thingamajig is the much more proper term.
Yes. Yes. So, and raising and lowering the thingamajig a lot regularly, there are some, some considerations there for component wear and tear. There's also, we understand by talking to someone who's currently operating wireless streetcar in Dallas, that sometimes from an operational perspective, there can be some issues there with, with the operator, either forgetting to raise or lower the pantograph, or raising and lowering it at the wrong time, which can impact performance. So, so understanding that, and the number of times that you have to raise and lower the thingamajig is important.
Councilmember QB. So, I mean, I'm fascinated by the whole battery state of charge. When we had the presentation about the hydrogen extension, extended streetcar possibility, hydrogen extended battery, the whole state of charge issue wasn't really discussed that much because it showed, your study showed that the hydrogen model never went below, was it seventy percent or eighty percent? It was actually the highest performing in terms of battery state of charge of any of the technologies that were brought up.
Right, so the hydrogen scenario is a bit unique because the, with, with only the battery onboard, you know, you consume battery, consume battery energy, and the only way to replenish that is to raise the thingamajig and recharge. With the fuel cell, the hydrogen fuel cell scenario, the fuel cell actually acts as a generator onboard. So you can, you know, think of it as a diesel generator, just, that's running constantly, charging the battery while you operate. Unfortunately, at the time, we didn't feel that the technology was suitable for the revenue service deployment that Valley Metro had planned and the city had planned, and that was still a little early in the research phases for, for operating at the level of revenue service that was desired. So we'll run through each of the four scenarios, and we'll try to keep it brief, but just so you can understand what are the energy requirements of the different scenarios, and what are some of the risks, and some, some things that work well and some things that scare us. Scenario one, the only off-wire section is between Ninth, Mill and Ninth, just south of University Drive up to Hayden Ferry on Real Salado. That segment of approaching Ninth, approaching the station at Ninth and Mill, you would be at full battery capacity, fully charged. You would then lower the pantograph and begin the off-wire segment, travel down Mill Avenue, take a right on Real Salado, and get back on-wire at Hayden Ferry. During that minute, you know, operating that segment off-wire, you would drain about twenty percent of that battery from eighty to sixty percent. During worst-case scenarios, so imagine a game day, fully loaded vehicle, really slow traffic, you know, so during the fully loaded vehicle scenarios, worst case, you could operate on that off-wire from, with that twenty percent discharge, and you would have a margin there for twenty minutes or eighteen-minute traffic delay without ever occurring a derated performance, or you know, the system shutdown situation at thirty-eight percent.
Well, let's go back, and scenario one is one that Valley Metro, we said, we can live with this. So this is our baseline proposal. We feel comfortable enough with the envelopes and the, and the operating scenario that we can say we could feel comfortable with this.
And the reason why we have, thank you, Mr. Smith, the reason why we have the different scenarios is because we spend a lot of time trying to beautify our city, and we're trying to take down wires, but now we're adding wires. And the concern I think the council had, and my colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, is I'm more concerned about Mill Avenue, which is it, and ultimately, if we could have it completely wireless, that'd be great, but we're not there yet. But I hope we keep in mind that whatever we decide on, that we do it with the intent that maybe as technology progresses, that we'll be able to be completely off-wire, and we're built, whatever we're doing, we're looking towards that direction. And that really, the intersections of Real Salado and Mill, that is the gateway entryway, and I would not want to have wires intersecting there, as well as University and Mill, and then potentially damage, as the former mayor mentioned, because of the iconic structure with damage. But with that being said, what we have before us, I'm really concerned about all the wires crisscrossing. When I went down to Tucson with you, we looked at Tucson Streetcar, the first thing that popped in my head was all this, at a major intersection, all the wires crossing each other in a four-way stop. I'm like, wow, that's, that's intense.
And Mayor, maybe to backtrack a little bit, where we started from and why we're here.
No, I know.
You remember the very first meeting, we didn't know.
Right.
And we were, I was unwilling to make a commitment as to anything because we didn't have the CTE study. So what we tried to do is say, okay, let's, let's understand that Mill Avenue was, when we first started, was the bottom, bottom line, and can we get there as a starting point? And so we've done the study with CTE with us, and we've decided that yes, we can do that. Now, subsequent to that, in the last council meeting, for example, we brought up the, the different scenarios about all off Ash, certainly in the intersections, and a variety of wishes, a wish list, so to speak, as to how the wires are. So these options are really taking us through what we would consider the two, not extremes, but the two, the two edges, defining the paradigm. Option one is our baseline, which we feel comfortable with this, and then we go, you'll go through in options two and three, which offers different scenarios that accomplish what you're talking about. And then option four would be the, the mother load, the wish list, what if we could go completely off-wire on both Mill and Ash? And we've done that analysis for those and everything in between.
Councilmember Granville, then Councilmember QB.
Just a quick question. One of the things I didn't see in this is, and I don't know anything about this technology, certainly not as much as you guys do or Councilmember QB does, but I know like with a typical battery, over time, the battery doesn't charge the same way or it decharges less. So when I saw these numbers, my first thought was, okay, that's day one. How do these batteries degrade at year, six months or at a year? I mean, I assume these numbers don't hold up a year or two hours.
And that's one of the considerations that we'll get into in the other options, because, because as you go through cycles, and as you charge and recharge and charge and recharge, yes, the battery does degrade over time.
Like your iPhone.
Like your iPhone.
No, I'm just.
A battery's a battery. And with current technology, what we've tried to do is we've tried to anticipate perfect scenarios, but also what happens if, if, if we utilize it many times. One thing we don't know, and we won't know until we actually get out there and use, is does that mean that the life cycle of that battery is thirty-six months, sixty months, however many it is? We'll find that out as we go, go along, but understanding that the more times you cycle and you drain and recharge, and the level of that, you're going to determine the, the life cycle of that battery.
And typically during negotiations or during the procurement process, you will negotiate a battery warranty. And typically in the industry, that warranty looks something like, you know, we, you know, if, within a two-year period, or within a four-year period, or within a six-year period, whatever is negotiated, when that battery holds eighty percent of the energy that it started with on day one, you know, if it, if it falls, if the battery health, is the term, if the battery health falls below eighty percent within a timeframe, then you know, it is below the warranty levels. We will repair or replace the battery in order to meet the eighty percent health requirement. Now, the numbers we see before us assume that the battery has already degraded to eighty percent health.
Oh, okay.
So it's kind of the worst, it's kind of the end-of-life scenario. The battery isn't brand-new. This isn't the day-one operation, this isn't the day-one estimate. This is, we've been operating the vehicle regularly over time. The battery health has degraded. It's near the warranty level.
Okay.
Councilmember QB, and then Councilmember Shapiro.
So, a few months back, we reconfigured Real Salado to move the streetcar from the center lane to, to one lane. And so, given this new information about the battery state of charge, couldn't we consider reconfiguring Mill so that the streetcar is on the parking lane, and will reduce the chance for an eighteen-minute delay? Well, the streetcar will go faster on Mill. A lot of us have concerns about stoppages on Mill, just because we see stoppages on Mill right now. It might reduce the chance of a delay if the car goes faster. I know that might be, you know, that's going to be design work, but we've already, you know, adjusted it for Real Salado. Does it make sense to consider that as a possibility for Mill?
There's, there's two thoughts. I think we talked about this maybe at the December meeting. The.
The battery state of charge information.
Correct. We didn't, we did, we had the exploration probably a year and a half ago. We worked with the downtown community and, and did the door-to-door canvassing to understand what people wanted in the way of where the track would be, whether it was in that parking lane or whether it was in the through lane. And we did, I think it was about sixty-forty, sixty-five, thirty-five support for the, for the through lane. I'd have to look at the numbers, but I know we did do that, and the majority support was for the, the traffic lane. And part of the reasons for that was that people wanted to see the possibility of future expansion of the pedestrian area, expansion of restaurant outdoor space in Mill Avenue, and keep that flexibility of what's happening in the parking lane today.
With full disclosure though, I got to tell you, if there was an option presented to the business owners and the DTA, whether it's completely wireless, and you have an option to do that, I think it'd be completely different, because this is how the question was asked. I asked this very same question. I wasn't on, obviously I wasn't on the prevailing side of that issue, but to Eric's point, he's right, he did ask it. It was a sixty-forty split, but if you re-asked the same question again regarding the different scenarios and options based on completely wireless on Mill, that wasn't even an option when this was done. So if you did that, that could have a whole completely different perspective with the business owners as you move forward.
That's a valid point. And the, the other issue that we, that we talked about when we went through that process and discussing with the community was that it doesn't necess, when you get to the traffic signals, you still would have to have, if you're in that, if you try to make it a dedicated lane, you'd have to change the cycle of the traffic signals. And we anticipated, like if you're on Mill in that parking lane, all those signals where, where today, if you're in the through lane, in the vehicle lane, the streetcar kind of operates like a car, and you can have right turns, you can have pedestrian movement through those intersections. If you have it in that dedicated lane, you would have to create a separate cycle in all of those traffic signals, five of them or so roughly. And that, and that would anticipate, we would anticipate that would increase the travel time as well as the delay for the whole, for each intersection, because you'd be adding another layer to that cycle. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, can I just add one more?
All right, I'm in charge now, so.
So it doesn't.
Okay, Alexander Haig. Well, I just want to add that also eighteen months ago, we were in a less traffic situation. We've seen a real increase in traffic on Mill, and there's increased development, and so we're kind of, you know, this process has been ongoing for a long time, as you all know. And I don't know, I just think that there's, should be some consideration for that, considering that we see the battery state of charge is now an issue, that there's less chance of that happening and more likelihood of unimpeded traffic on a dedicated lane that's on a parking lane.
Navarro, did you have something you want to say?
I think someone's first, and then me. No? Okay, it's me. So you talked about battery life, eighty percent, worst case. When do the batteries get replaced? At fifty percent? Do we know this?
Again, typically that's negotiated through a warranty, so you could specify eighty percent, or when.
From an operational standpoint, when we get to the point where we can't consistently, consistently run an operation or a circuit without it coming close to what we would call the danger zone, at that point in time, we would replace the battery.
Whatever that percentage is. So I, I'm just being a safety guy.
The battery, the battery usage and the charger is monitored consistently.
Right.
You know, we will record and track, you know, the charges, the drainage, those kind of things. That is monitored. And so we just look and, look and see. If we, the ability to keep a charge and enable us to make the circuit without constantly going in is two years, we have to change it two years. If it's four years, we'll do, we'll take it as far as it can go. But that's, there's really no data or anything that shows what that will be, because we are really in uncharted territory. We will be the, I believe, the second system in the country. Detroit is ready to open up in May, and it has a similar type of thing with multiple sections. But other than that, there's, there's been no system that runs in this environment with battery propulsion. So we're in uncharted territory.
Go ahead.
No, and that was to my point, and I was hoping that there was some backup data, and I was like thinking of NICE, and obviously they've been running that system for a few years. Obviously, the climate, climate is not the same, but it might give us a ballpark of what they've been experiencing with their battery replacement, and when they take them out and replace them. And then the other question is, obviously, the cost of the batteries to replace is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, or up to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand per replacement. And then, and then on top of that, what happens to the disposal of the battery, or what happens to the battery itself? Do we know that by chance? And if you guys came here, I, this.
Well, two things. Number one, it is, right now, at today's prices, it is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand per battery. So that would be for the six vehicles. You know, you're looking at a million and a half dollars. The life of the battery, we can't determine, but we're estimating three to five years. Three on the low end, five on the iron end. So, and that would be costs that will be borne by Tempe. That's considered an operating cost.
Right.
So, you know, do all batteries play out at the same time? You know, we'll see. We'll have six cars. Four will be in constant, constant use. The other two will be in periodic use. So, you know, we'll see how that plays out in operation. But that's, that's an amount that you'll have to look forward to in covering. On a three-to-five-year cycle is what we estimate.
Any other questions at the moment? Want to continue with the presentation?
Yeah, we're onto scenario two then.
Yeah, we can make it to two.
So, two includes the off-rout segment on Mill, just like the other scenarios. It also adds an off-rout segment between, well, you know, along, at Station Three along Rio near Ash, down to Station Six, near the Ash and University Drive intersection. This was a scenario that was examined previously about a year ago in the earlier study. Similarly to scenario one, the largest area of concern is that, is that Mill segment with this scenario, the Mill Avenue presents a greater risk than the Ash Avenue, so the Ash Avenue is fine here. You do have to raise and lower the pantograph twice as often as you do in scenario one, because you have that on and off segment along Ash. Scenario three. Just by, just by viewing the image, you can tell scenario three is a little more complicated. We have.
This is the scenario that takes into account the desire to keep wires off, off the intersection.
Correct. Correct. So this, just like the other scenarios, Mill Avenue is free of wires throughout the entire, entire segment. The off-wire on the southbound segment, the off-wire begins at Hayden Ferry, and it continues across Mill Avenue onto Ash, near the intersection of the Ash and the light rail track. At that station, at Station Four, you would raise the pantograph and connect back to, back on, back on wire. You would travel on-wire down near the Ash University intersection, where you would go off-wire for a short segment on University Drive, through the intersection at Mill, which would be off-wire, and then you would get back on-wire near Ninth and Mill, and continue southbound down to Apache. This segment has similar, from a battery state of charge perspective. This segment has similar, from a battery state of charge perspective, similar risk to the other scenarios, but there is an increased wear and tear on the pantograph components because now we are raising and lowering it six times every time you complete the loop, which is, you know, three times more than scenario one and twi, and, you know, a couple more times more than scenario two.
And just to explain a little bit what the risk is with the pantograph.
First of all, these pantographs on our existing light rail, they might get lowered once a week, if that. They're, they're not designed to go up and down. And obviously any mechanical unit has a stated life of cycles. The manufacturer will rate it and, and to give you an idea, at seven and a half years, we started re, not rehabbing, but overhauling and replacing the motors on our pantographs that go down once and twice. There's, there's stress on them as they move because, you know, they're on a spring. So we've started to rehab and, and overhaul the assembly after seven, seven and a half years. Obviously if you're raising and lowering it six times, that will, the motor will wear out much more quickly and you'll have to spend more on maintenance on that pantograph. The other thing, then that's, that's one cost that will be more. We don't know exactly how that will work, once again, because we're, we're in uncharted territory. The other thing is the operator error. And that is that lowering the pantograph or failure to raise the pantograph creates a, a risk that, you know, you run out of battery life. That's probably pretty minimal because there'll be warning signs and everything and before you know it, the operator will go, dang it, I forgot it. And they'll hopefully raise it before they can go. That's not the big one. The big one is the failure to lower the pantograph. If you're on an off wire situation, you fail to lower the pantograph, the wires are here, the thingamajig is there, all of a sudden you run into a structure and there will be damage. There will be damage to the wire, there will be damage to the pantograph, and as is experienced in Dallas, there could be damage to the car itself because if you hit at the wrong angle or with enough, with enough force, it could actually bend or tear the, the mooring that's on the top of the car away. Those are risks that we manage through training, but obviously the more times you have to go through that operation, the greater the operational risk. Once again, Tempe is in charge of operations, so you, you have two risks. Number one, that the cost to repair will be higher and you will bear that. But also if you rip the, rip the pantograph off of a, off of a, top of a car, then that car is out of service for a while and so you're, you have a service risk. So I just want you to know that if you make a decision, Valley Metro can go with it, but we, you need to understand what the operational costs and risks would be.
I think Councilmember Shapiro has a question. And just for the information, I know the mayor is on the phone. Mayor, you, you were there, right? He's probably on mute.
I'm here. I have got to believe that technology is at a point such that we could automate the up and down movement of that to an extent where, or, or at least have a mixed automation where there's a light that's flashing that says, you're about to hit the wires, lower the darn thing. Like, I gotta believe technology is at a point where we, we could solve that problem and really minimize the potential for that kind of an error, can't we?
There is, there is a system out there, council member, and I would say it can mitigate the problem. I don't believe anyone's willing to say it'll minimize the problem. There is, there is an automated system that consists of sensors and other things in the car that also has, has a cost, a minimum, as best we can tell, between about $50,000 a car and half a million dollars a car for the entire installation and everything that would go in and would automate that. So you hit a sensor just like on a, a train signal that would go up or go down that. You could do that. It's not foolproof. It's been tried, but is not, does not have enough experience or data to say that it's foolproof, but it certainly, it certainly could be, could be tried and could be installed. Once again, that's a Tempe call that's not in the, in the bid right now or the, the costing of the car as we know it. You know, you just weigh the risks. How many pantographs can we damage before we reach that cost? And so, you know, it's, it's weighing the, the balancing the risk and the, and the cost. There's a cost to either one. And I would say that, once again, we are, we can train people and minimize that. We can install the system and minimize that as best we can. Either one is acceptable to us right now as long as we understand the risks that we're, that we're accepting.
Any questions about scenario three? I'm not sure why we're talking about scenario four, but we can.
Scenario four, like the other scenarios, remains off wire on Mill, but it includes an off wire segment all the way from Hayden Ferry, southbound along Ash, all the way down to the Ninth and Univers, or Ninth and Mill stop just south of University. The, the Mill Avenue is not the riskiest area of operation for this scenario. What scares us is the operation from Hayden Ferry down to Ninth and Mill. That's over a mile of off wire. And under the worst case loads where the vehicle is fully loaded, operating in, in the Tempe climate with maximum hotel loads and HVAC running on the vehicle, you can run into a situation where only a 10-minute delay along Ash could cause you to go into the derated performance zone and begin shutting down some of the accessory systems and eventually stopping the vehicle. That's based on kind of the, the operations that, that you want to run here. Now, we don't recommend this scenario for you.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Well, now, now that we've looked at the different scenarios, I mean, I'll, I'll just say, scenario, in scenario three, I, I, you know, it really does kind of contemplate a lot of the input that we've given you and feedback we've given you. I, you know, I'm just looking at Google Earth along the route on Ash where it would still be on wire. You know, one of the concerns we originally expressed about off wire was the tree canopy on Mill. There is no tree canopy anywhere along that portion of the Ash route that would be on wire as compared to scenario four. So I have less concern there. I also think, as the mayor talked about, in terms of technological advances and battery technology, et cetera, that would be an easy segment to remove sort of early on in that technological evolution if we got to a point where it was like, okay, our battery technology is sufficient now. We could easily just pull out that, that small section there on Ash and reduce the up and down motion by two, right? By a third.
Well, let's put it this, yes, you could do that, but I don't want to, there's one adjective, I don't know, it's an adjective to say easily? Yes. Whatever it is, grammar.
Got some wire cutters.
Yeah. Nothing, nothing's easy because this is an integrated system, remember?
Just turn it off.
Yeah. One of the, one of the challenges that we have and why we need the, the decision now is that as you can see on option, on scenario three, you have three basically electrical islands. This electrical system is not integrated with the light rail system. And you have to figure out a way to charge those three and create, and create operational consistency and redundancy in those. So we can accomplish that, with that, but it's not easily, just say you can snip wire or take it down. It's a much more complex process because that would, that would create engineering and, and analysis to how that would, how that would affect the other two sections that have to be wired. It can, anything can be done at a cost and with a, with certain risks involved. And the other, the other question, council member, that you said, we went into this understanding that as we move forward, there are two things, well, three things that we are pretty sure of. Number one, batteries will get cheaper, they'll get smaller and they'll become more efficient. So we, we came into this understanding that the discussion that we're having five, 10 years from now, we'll probably be talking about a battery technology that is much advanced as what it is today. We don't know where that will go, but we, we assume that it will be better. These cars are set up so that they can easily, easily adapt to that.
Before we start kind of vetting through the scenarios, I know there's one slide that we didn't quite cover in regards to the additional cost for the off wire, which was the cost for the batteries like Councilmember Navarro was discussing. In regards to those maintenance costs, can we go through that really quickly?
Did you want to know?
Well, we can talk about that. Those, what this slide does is it basically puts some dollar amounts onto the kind of risks and that we've been talking about and reiterates the fact that, as you can see the cost there, that these will be determined, be considered operational costs and therefore will be, would be the responsibility of, of the city of Tempe under that, so.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yeah, Madam Vice Mayor and Mr. Smith, to your, to your point, I, I totally hear you. I mean, my, my point is, at the point where we have the engineering technology and the battery technology, that it's sufficient such that we, we don't need that section on Ash anymore, I guess my point is that it's an easy, it's an easy takeout compared to when you have the bidirectional wires down on, you know, Mill or Apache, for example, which are going to have a lot more infrastructure by comparison. Now that said, I was about to sort of contradict myself in saying, to former Mayor Giuliani's point, I really, if, if we do go the route of scenario three, I would like us to contemplate before we jump onto that, the, the eventual difficulty and possibility of taking it all the way around to that stop pass damage and going off wire. And so, maybe that's no difference from scenario three. But what I'm asking is, if, like you talked about power stations and things like that, if, if we're going to locate a power station along that route, I wouldn't want it to be on Mill, on the southern portion. Because if we put it on Mill and we end up removing, like former Mayor Giuliani was talking about, removing around the damage, now your power station's in the wrong place. So I just, I, I would like to contemplate that eventually we would like to have all of Mill clear wires and plan for that if, if possible.
We have a place in front of a certain house on the damage turn on Mill-
Good, yeah.
-that we've been contemplating because we know that person would love to have that do out of-
We can get you, we can get you easement.
I, I think so.
You need a really big plug in his backyard.
No, we, we, the idea is that we will design a system that is as flexible as, as possible. And we can't foretell this, foresee the future, but we have an idea of where we're headed. And so we'll try to do the best we can. One other thing, and, and one other thing to, to note too, and I'm not advocating one way or another because we are agnostic once we get past scenario one, is that the infrastructure for streetcar wires is, is much less than it is for light rail. The wires aren't as big, the, the type of thing. So when, when you get in there, you know, I know that in our mind, our vision is that it's the light rail type of thing. Those are much more significant. They're double wired, they're gigantic wires, and it's not quite as much because you're not pulling as much electricity. You have a single car running on that as opposed to the big double cars or, or even three, three cars that the light rails have. So as you think of this, remember, it, it is going to be a different visual with the wires and you won't see that until it's actually built, but it, it is different than what you see on the light rail.
Councilmember Cooper, and then Councilmember Navarro, sorry.
So my interest originally in looking at wireless on, on Ash and Mill was to create sort of a cohesive look downtown, a cohesive aesthetic. And, but I agree with Councilmember Shapiro that just to add the little doohickeys, to add the little spur, I mean, I realize some of it has to be west on Rio Salado, but this additional part on Ash doesn't really add much and it doesn't create cohesiveness. In fact, it takes away from the cohesiveness. And then I was really struck by former Mayor Neil Giuliani's comments and just, I mean, when you think about, when we think about damage, it is incredibly iconic. And if we could somehow, can we find a way to see how far we can go while keeping the battery at its charge while reducing risk and see how far we can go to keep it towards the damage side and keep it as far below damage as we can? I mean, I don't know if that sets up a whole new study, but I mean, can we-
One point of concern from, from the technology perspective is the batteries will, it is better for the batteries to have continuous stretches of off wire than to continuously cycle off wire, on wire, off wire, on wire. Because, you know, cycling the battery from fully charged, you know, to draining to fully charged, you, you want to minimize the number of times you do that. So as, as you consider the different options that include multiple on wire, off wire segments or you, or you contemplating, or you contemplate adding or removing segments, you know, that's important to keep in mind that long or continuous segments of off wire are better than multiple breaks.
And, and so if you looked at that scenario three and added that, the two stops on the damage curve, you'd be looking at increasing that thingamajigger movement, the pantograph movement by two more. So you'd go up to, I think we're at six for this scenario three, you'd go up to eight.
I don't, I'm trying to understand.
And then we would have-
How many pantographs would we have if we went to-
Right, no, I understand that, but you're, you're talking about, if you're looking at scenario three or four, if you just move the green further down, how?
Oh, I think what Eric was thinking of is that you create another gap between Ninth and College. Just on the-
Just based upon the data that you're seeing with scenario-
I got you.
Or not Ninth, but Eleventh and College.
Correct.
Councilmember Navarro, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, and, and you kind of answered it. And, and we'd have to get back with the study and what that damage curve looks like and what makes appropriate sense if it is doable or, or how doable it is without going off the life of the battery. And then I think another portion of the question was somewhat answered. Obviously the power to run the car is like, what, 220, 221?
220. Yeah. 700, 750 volts.
So, so what I was, with that though, I mean-
Good Michael Peaton quote though, by the way.
I got it.
I've seen that movie.
So, but if we, if we have to, if we have these stops where they're, where the wiring's coming off and on, obviously we have to have infrastructure to continue, continue the cable underground. Am I correct? It's not just a, another new station or, I have no idea.
What, what we would do, for example, coming in from Hayden Ferry is we'll, the wire will go down and be buried. And we'll just have to have consultants do the, do the, the calculations as to energy loss and that kind of thing, and they can balance it out, balance the system. But it will be connected, it will come up in, in various stages, at least, at least two sites where we'll either have a north and a south or a three section. And then as part of the engineering as we go forward, they will decide where they need to put those, those traction power substations to be able to balance the power out.
You have any more, go ahead.
I'm still conflicted about, you know, knowing that Mill is likely the place where we'd have the most congestion and knowing that we've decided to have the streetcar hug the southern side of Rio Salado, right? And hug the street and be its own lane there. I just don't understand why on Mill, which is our most trafficked and iconic street, why we wouldn't want to consider having it be a dedicated lane when we know, I don't want to just do this from personal, resolve this from personal experience that I get stuck in Mill traffic all the time. That shouldn't be the way we resolve things, but have our traffic engineers looked at the increased, or maybe it's not increased, maybe it's my perception, but have our traffic engineers looked at the Mill Avenue traffic situation and deemed what might be best for the streetcar in recent times? Have they done it recently?
There's a couple of things, and I, I said one of them earlier, and that was that we did look at it when we did this, we did this outreach a couple of years ago with the, with the community. And it doesn't, and I don't have the data in front of me, but you do have to add a, a separate phase to each traffic signal if you have that dedicated lane. Because you, because what's happening today is it would be in the traffic lane, it's sort of operating like a bus, the scenario on Mill Avenue. If you put it in that dedicated lane, the, the free flowing right turn movements that people make, you know, they pull into that parking lane at the intersections. All that would, that movement would go away, the pedestrian movement would be a little bit more difficult, you'd have to add a phase to those signals. So it does increase the delay or the time periods at each one of those signals.
Okay. You did say that before, but by saying that, you're saying you're not that concerned about the battery state of charge then, so.
No, I, I mean, I think we, I think you would add a little bit of that, you'd exhaust the battery state of charge a little bit by adding a little bit of extra time to that, to that each cycle, each signal on Mill Avenue. But I'm less worried about that. I'm more worried about what the response we got from the community and then, and then the fact that it's not necessarily going to increase our, our travel time by having that a dedicated on Mill. The other difference is that on Rio Salado, you, you, if you're on the south side, there's very few right turn movements crossing, traversing that, that, it's a different configuration than Mill Avenue. You don't have many right turn movements crossing that trackway if you're on the south side of Rio Salado.
But I, I will kind of talk about what the mayor mentioned earlier though. When we did, went out for public input and that feedback, the, the fact that there wasn't going to be wires on Mill wasn't even part of the discussion at the time, right? So I don't know if the feedback would be different now or not, based on the new information and the direction that we're heading. So food for thought and see what that looks like. I'm not opposed to maybe at least exploring that option, but, you know, we might be able to solve it just by a quick check-in and see what, you know, the, the DTA and the businesses along Mill really, how they feel about that. Councilmember Navarro?
Agree, and thanks to your point. And the, one other thing is Councilmember Shapiro brought this up and kind of made me think about, if there is a time down the road with technology getting better and better and better, does it make sense that portions, well, I'm thinking of this, I'm thinking out loud, I guess, that we can take out sections of that wire, you know, like Ash Avenue, but we still have that, have to have that continuous circuit? So is the infrastructure could be planned in a way to where that, if the burying, if the wires have to be buried throughout the track and throughout the process, is there ability to have that potentially there so that when we come back or we do that later on down the road? And I'm thinking about like damage, if damage can't get in right now, but it could get in later, we can drop those lines on the ground. Having that cost already done while we're doing the tracks and digging it up, does that help?
Councilmember Navarro, yeah, we bury conduit, whether we're going to use it or not, just because once we put in concrete, it's not nice to go cut it out. So regardless of that, we'll design what we know now, but we will put in conduit underneath the concrete so that if at some point in time we needed to run a line or whatever, we could do that. The conduit would be in place. We can include that and will include that in the, in the design.
So with scenario three, is there any value to having the portion on Ash and the portion that goes a little bit east? We want to cover the intersection to protect the sightlines of the intersection, but is it, what is the value, whether from sightlines or from design?
I'm sorry, what should we talk about?
What is the value of having just a small spur on Ash?
You get a recharge of the batteries, because without that, the batteries then reach critical level and you get outside the operational safety range. You need, you need that stretch to recharge.
Well, I think our next steps is, I don't know, Councilmember Keaton, do you have anything that you wanted to, questions?
No.
I think moving forward, what we need to do first and foremost, obviously, is give you guys some direction in what scenario we'd like to lean to, some additional things to, to think about. Is there a scenario that we can eliminate?
Four.
Another scenario we can eliminate?
One.
One.
All right, oh, this is good. So we're down to two and three. Is there a preference of, of two or three?
Three.
Three?
Three.
Three? Three. Councilmember Granville?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I think council, I think scenario three is, if we're going to do one, I think scenario three is the one to do because particularly when you look at streetcars, the intersections are where you have to put all these wires over everywhere, so it's, it just looks like a mess. And you want to include, you want to make that sightline go, you know, right from when you come off the bridge all the way down Mill Avenue as far as you can. The one thing I would just add, and first off, really great presentation, by the way. The one thing I would just add, though, is that $250,000 to $300,000, that was per battery and there were six batteries, in three to five years. So you said 1.5 million, that would be the low end, that would be the 250,000. The high end would be 2.1 million. So when you break that down, the lowest possible additional cost is $300,000 a year. The upper end could be five or 550,000.
Three to 500,000.
Yeah. I would say just for me, I have, I have faith in your study and I have faith that this will work, but I, but for three to 500,000 a year or the transit tax money, gosh, there's a, there's at least one more place I'd want to put in orbit, and that's about the cost of running an orbit every year. So given the choice between having those lines or not having those lines and having another orbit, or having three to 500,000 to do some sort of other transit infrastructure, that would be my preference. That said, if, if that is entirely off the table, then my preference is option three.
Mayor, do you, do you have a preference? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I think, as I stated earlier, scenario three is what I was looking at, hoping that the progression of the technology advances by the time we get, you know, fully on board and we can make some changes as we move forward, but I'm good with scenario three.
All right. Well, I think, I think you kind of heard from us a little bit, but I want to make sure I'm clear with the council in regards to moving forward with scenario number three and some of the other options or some of the things to consider. Doesn't mean that that's the direction we're going to go, but maybe just some thoughts to consider to see if it's even possible. And I know the mayor mentioned definitely the, making sure that we're set for future technology, if there's a way that we can do that. I mean, I think we need to make sure that we're prepared for that. I, I don't disagree in the sense of making sure that we need to understand what that maintenance cost is with number three and that we're really clear on that. I think that would be great. And I also like the idea of like Councilmember Shapiro talked about, you know, mitigating operator error, error when it comes to the pantographs, if there's a way that that could be automated. I think that was something else. And then also, I think Councilmember Cooby mentioned, maybe just exploration of a dedicated lane on Mill, and maybe we could at least, at the very least, just get some feedback and then maybe the expansion around the curve, if that is possible.
Expansion around the curve.
In front of damage.
Oh.
Yeah, just to see if that's even viable at all. I'm sorry, okay. Councilmember Navarro?
Just one other thing, and maybe you have the answer or maybe some of that, but if the, if the rail does get stuck, how does it get pushed to where it needs to go?
Good question.
Yeah.
They're calling you.
Yeah.
We, we currently, that's going to be, that's going to have to be designed, it's going to have to be towed or dragged or pushed. But we've considered making that part of the, the city council responsibilities.
Big man over here to do it.
You can't just take another car out there, and so what we'll have to do is we're going to have to put up a, on the thingamajig or the watchamacallit, we're going to have a doo-woppy, like you said, some sort of way that we can actually tow that with some other means like a truck or a big type of thing, if you have to tow it in.
Councilmember Granville?
One other thing if we could get that would be helpful is I, I have a sort of a user experience of what's the worst case scenario for wait times on Mill Avenue, but, but that's just off of my head. So we have the numbers, if it's a 10-minute wait, if it's a 15-minute wait, but I don't know on our worst Friday night, or whatever it is, how long those waits could be. They feel like they're an hour. I'm sure they're not an hour, but if you have that information, that would be helpful too.
We will, I can tell you that yesterday I drove from college through downtown at four o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay, that's a pretty bad time.
It took me 15 minutes.
Right.
So.
And what was your, what was your shutdown time, if it was, how much of a delay?
18 minutes.
Yeah, that doesn't bode well.
That was from college, that was from college.
College, okay.
That, the 18 minutes is from, is from basically university.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be interesting to know if a dedicated lane would change those wait times. I have no idea, but it would be, that might be helpful.
If I could, now, you've introduced two.
He's in the back, he'll go for you.
We like to complicate things.
Yeah, well, the two, and I'm, and once again, we're here to serve you, but we want you to understand what, what that takes. There is no, there is no easy way to do things because we are at 30% design. We can analyze the two things you've talked about. Number one, the dedicated lane on Mill. What that will do is that will take time and that will take money, because we now have to stop the design that we have now, which is not contemplate a, a dedicated lane and then see what that analysis would do and talk to Tempe Traffic to figure out what kind of scenario we'd have, whether we'd allow right lanes, whether, what kind of signaling we'd come to, and also then at some point in time, we have to design exactly where the track's going to be. So that takes time. As far as the analysis on the, on the damage curve, once again, that takes time and money because the CTE would have to redo another analysis based on, based on what we would, what we would probably look at is maybe off-wire between college and 11. That would take time, and time, because we now have a designer and a contractor on board, they're either working or they're not working, but we're still paying because they've mobilized. So I just want you to know, I want to be straight with you, that it could take a month. I don't know what CTE's timeframe is as far as being able to do that. We possibly could be ready by the May 22nd, the next session that you have here. We will try, but I cannot guarantee that. It might take, you know, four to six weeks to come up with those kind of analyses. That would, that would be sufficient enough to be able to make a decision from. These are, this is great work that CTE and, and others did, but it took a couple, three months to put this together, because it's, you know, some of these calculations are somewhat complicated. Am I out of line in giving those time things for what you guys can do?
That was an appropriate estimate. I think we could have it prepared by May 22nd, but yeah, it's not a, we wouldn't have it tomorrow, that's for sure.
But I would say we'll do the best we can. If we cannot meet as far as the, as far as the off, the dedicated lane by May 22nd, we'll let you know. But each, as now, the clock's ticking, and just so you know, that we need to make some firm decisions so we can move ahead, because we have engineers and, and just waiting.
We don't disagree, and I would just say this, we certainly do appreciate the work that's gone into it and, and 100% understand, you know, the time crunch and where we are too, but I think from our perspective is we want to get it right. And once those tracks are in the ground, they're in the ground. And so to me, if it takes a little bit of time, I mean, if the council's okay, I would, I think we should take the time to just explore those, at least till we get to the point where you say, you know what, we'll give you some quick feedback, and that's just not going to happen moving forward, let me tell you why, what some of those concerns.
I believe we can get it done, and I've talked to our team and Eric and everyone. I think May 20, May 22nd is the next.
May 22nd is our next update.
May 22nd is the next report. I believe we can get you a sufficient data on both those different alternatives that we can, but because we're, we're now have set in with a scenario three, we'll work from that template.
Perfect.
And we'll see, we'll see what we've got.
Well, and I would say, and I think one of the things that you heard probably last time in regards to not having the wires at the intersection, especially at the Rio Salado Mill intersection, how important that was to keep that clear. I don't know about, you know, anybody else, but I wouldn't be willing to give that up for any of those other options. I think that's really important.
And we'll come back, we won't completely dismiss, let's say that if the Durango, the Durango curve, I'm sorry. Neil, you live on the Durango curve. The damage curve, if we get the damage curve, we'll come up with some scenarios because there, we may present you with some other trade-offs. You know, to say, listen, which is more important, this stretch? If we add a stretch here and we do something else on Ash, can we do that? We'll, we'll try and come back with some different scenarios so that you're not, you're not, it's not just totally a yes or no, it's a, once again, we like bringing up two and three different scenarios for you.
I think that's totally fine, and I think one of the things that we've been fairly consistent on in the past is Mill needs to be wireless. That was definitely one of the things, and I thought we had heard from the council the last time, that that intersection and the gateway into Tempe was really important to consider.
Mill and Rio Salado we will not touch.
Fantastic, okay.
I can't guarantee university and the other things.
Traffic, traffic time, like during a damage, you know, during a performance getting out on a Friday night, just a couple of options.
Absolutely. Councilmember Navarro, I'm sorry, did you? Councilmember Cooby?
Yeah, I just was thinking about, I'm sorry, I have battery problems here, can you guys fix that? 138% charged.
Drop wire.
Just, I had concerns, you know, talking about the, the design element, the timing, sort of the elephant in the room, literally the elephant in the room is, is the timing of the federal funding, and is that, is that causing any challenges to the, is that causing any challenges to the design process?
Yeah, just jump, because we figured you would be asking about that. Right now, and I'll give you a quick overview of where we are. Right now, the Tempe streetcar is included, as you know, in the FTA budget. We won't call it the president's budget anymore because it's not the president, the FTA budget. There's approximately 55 projects at various stages in what's called the capital improvement grant program, CIG program. The, the current president's budget proposal eliminated that program for any, any projects that do not have a current signed full funding grant agreement, which we do not have. Therefore, under the president's proposal, we would be out. Most of Congress says that that's not going to play out. So where, where's the scenario? Two years ago, Congress passed the FAST Act, the, which was the Surface Transportation Act, which included funding for capital grants such as this. It included funding at about $2.3 billion a year. Here's the scenarios. There are appropriations bills going through Congress right now to fund the FAST Act. The House bill, the Senate bill, they have different levels of funding. One is a full FAST amount, the other one is not. The president's budget, which included the Tempe project, was at $2 billion above the FAST cap. I think it's pretty safe to say we're not going to go up to what the president's, the President Obama's budget said, which means that the program is oversubscribed. There are more programs in the, in the FTA budget than there will be funds. We, we don't know what, what the FTA will do as far as choosing how to allocate whatever funds are, are involved. Now, to further complicate the issue, those are the bills that are in progress. Right now, we are operating under a continuing resolution. The continuing resolution is at 2016 amounts, which is below the amount that the FAST Act had approved. That continuing resolution expires on April 28th. Congress can choose to do one of two things. They can either enact one of these appropriation bills, which will set in motion, or set the amount that is available for these, for these capital projects, or else they will simply extend the continuing resolution through to the end of the fiscal year of September 30th. If they do that, then FTA will come through and they'll take the money they have available, which is 2016 levels, they will decide how to allocate the projects, the money among the projects. In anticipation of this, if you'll recall, last September, the FTA asked us to re-submit the Tempe project in case they get to the point where they basically choose projects and we're not one of them, then what we would do is we would go back into the next round for the next fiscal year to be re-analyzed again. Are you confused enough? It's a very, it's a very, very fluid situation. We are progressing as though we will be fully funded. And until, anything other than that is pure speculation, well, not pure speculation, it's guessing among one of these four different scenarios. We're proceeding as though we will be fully funded. If we are not, we will be back here before you, and that may be the point of discussion on May 22nd. We may be back here to have a discussion as to what option B, C, and D are.
Okay, we won't look forward to that. All right, thank you, all right. Good.
Thank you.
One more, Councilmember Shapiro?
I'm sure you'll have the answer to this question, but I would really like to know how the president's proposal reconciles with his campaign promise to do infrastructure investment. But it's a rhetorical question.
Well, actually, it's an, it's an actual question, it's good, although it's rhetorical coming from the conservative kind of Republican you are. Here's basically what, what happened. The Heritage, the Heritage Foundation for many years has made proposals to get the federal government out of the transit business. There are a couple of Heritage people in the Office of Management and Budget, and basically the President Trump's budget is cut and paste out of the Heritage plan to basically turn total funding for transit programs over to cities and states. That's, that's it. But once again, as Senator McConnell said when asked about the Trump, President Trump budget, he said, I've been here 35 years, I've seen 35 presidential budgets, I'll leave it at that. So we, we believe that there will be funding, there doesn't seem to be a lot of, much appetite on either sides of the aisle or in either houses to completely eliminate that. At this point in time, we just don't know two things, what that level of funding will be, and then how the FTA will decide how to allocate those funds. Those are the two things we're looking at.
We just certainly appreciate the work, so I want to say thank you to CTE and your team, you know, Blake, Dan, thank you for being here, Scott and Eric for all your continued work, and we look forward to hearing back from you in, in May. All right.
We did have other slides, we don't have to go through those, they're in your packet. I don't think there's, I don't think there's any, that there's not many questions on them, we're going to continue.
Some of those are, some of those are from my spring break vacation.
Nazi dogs. Swimming at Tempe.
Oh, well, wait, I'm taking a hike on the Neil Giuliano Park.
Yeah, there it is. So we will, but we will be back, but we will be back on, on May 22nd to respond to a couple of the, the new considerations, the Mill Avenue as well as the damage curves, working with that scenario three. And then just want to remind you as well that we do have the public meeting coming up on April 19th.
Okay.
So you all, it's on your calendars.
That's good, thank you. Councilmember Navarro?
Just so I'm clear, you will go, come back on the, because we had a discussion on the corner of Mill and Rio Salado on how that track is going to turn.
Mill and Rio Salado, so that's, that is what we are configuring right now, that's what we are going through design with right now. We, some of the drawings that you see before you are, are looking at that. We understand that there are considerations that we need to be careful about with the Hayden Flower Mill development, we've been talking to them, the design team as well as city representatives and their, their attorney. We want to keep working with them, we think that we can come up with a workable solution. We do know that it does, it travels right on that corner there, so we, we think we can fit in the bike lane and the pedestrian facilities as well as integrate in with that development. We want, but we do not have that final design, we want to keep working with them. And then same, same thing applies with ASU as we get over into, in front of Sundale Stadium, as well as hugging around the edge of the preserve, making sure that we design that correctly. This, these are designs that will show up in our 30% that are being distributed now, as well as more, more detailed into the 60% coming out this summer. We can bring, we can bring that back to you, a little bit more information back to you in, in May. Okay?
And again, that public meeting, April 19?
April 19th.
Okay.
At the Cassano Room Transportation Center.
Anything else? We really appreciate it, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Good for seeing you in May. Yeah, we just skipped right through those. All right, next on the agenda, we have the Proposed Arts and Cultural Commission and Board Restructuring, Ralph. I think Ralph Remington is going to be heading this discussion. Come on down. You're the next contestant.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. I'm Ralph Remington, Deputy Director of Arts and Culture. I'm joined tonight with Kelly Nelson, who is a former Board Chair of Tempe Municipal Arts Commission and a current board member.
And I'm Kathy Hessler. I am the Deputy Director for Community Services at the library, and with me is Vice Chair of the Tempe Museum and Library Advisory Board, Peggy Maroney.
So we're here to update the mayor and the council on recommendations for boards and commissions. Council voted to implement Tempe Arts and Culture Plan, which created an Arts and Culture Division. This plan brought changes to the Tempe Municipal Arts Commission, what we call TMAC, revising the powers and duties of the commission. The plan called for the formation of an Arts and Culture Division, which would oversee the Tempe Center for the Arts, Municipal Arts Program, Arts Education, Arts Engagement, and the Tempe History Museum, since the museum aligns with the cultural mission of the approved plan and currently is under the Arts Division of Community Services. With this organizational change, the plan also recommends changes to the citizen advisory boards, which include Tempe Municipal Arts Commission and the Tempe History Museum and Library Advisory Board. So with support from both boards involved, who have discussed and voted on the proposed changes and the new roles, including Kelly Nelson and the Museum and Library Board Vice Chair Peggy Maroney, the Community Services Department proposes that TMAC be restructured to become the Arts and Culture Commission. So the new board, through attrition, would have nine members instead of 13.
This change to a new Arts and Culture Commission would then necessitate the change of the current Tempe History Museum and Library Advisory Board, which would solely then support the Tempe Public Library and consist of seven members. The Library Board would also consider the timeframe for appointing officers to coincide with the December 31st term expiration dates. Based on feedback, the revised ordinances for the Tempe Municipal Arts Commission to become the Arts and Culture Commission, and the Tempe History Museum and Library Advisory Board to become the Tempe Library Advisory Board, would go to council for first and second hearings and approval in May for implementation July 1st, 2017.
That's it, and we're open for questions.
All right, Councilmember Kewley?
So I do have a question. We've spoken about this offline, but the three most recent commissions have 11 members. Can you explain why you settled on nine versus 11?
Well, at the time, TMAC, we had nine members or went to nine members to be consistent with, at that time, the Library Commission, Library Board. So it was to be consistent with that board. That's basically the reason.
Any other questions? No, I thought you guys did a really good job. I mean, first and foremost, thank you for what you do. Really do appreciate it.
Thank you for what you do.
I think it sounds like we're all okay with the two changes, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Very nice. Excellent presentation.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Kelly, Kathy, and Peggy. All right. I'm sure this next one's going to go quick. Post joke. Fifth Street, Streetscape and Traffic Calming Project. Oh, Eric, Eric, I'm back. All right.
I think we're supposed to have Brayden Kay with me, but...
We'll just talk about him.
Anyone want to join?
Nobody's coming down, Eric. Looks like you're on your own.
Great.
Timmy lost four of you.
Yeah, everybody go.
Are we waiting, or?
Go on.
There's four of you, I guess. All right, we'll move through it quickly then. So, thank you.
Oh, yeah, there he is. Nice try.
We're done.
You can only hope. You can only hope.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Aradondo, members of council, Eric Iverson, Transportation, and I'm here with Brayden Kay, Sustainability Manager. This project that we want to hopefully give you a brief-ish update on, since you've had a long meeting already, is a streetscape project, not unlike a lot of our streetscape projects that we have designed and constructed over the years in Tempe that you're all familiar with. The difference with this one is that we've really taken this one through an even more exhaustive public process, as well as a partnership with our Transportation Commission, our transportation staff, and the sustainability program at the city. So that's why Brayden's here, and we just want to emphasize that that has been a really important element of the project as we've moved forward. Everyone's familiar with Fifth Street. You all are familiar with Fifth Street. These are the limits of the project, though. It goes on the east end from College Avenue to the west end, connecting to our historic neighborhoods Riverside Sunset on the west side. And then it has obviously major destinations along the route: City Hall, Hayden Butte Preserve, Transportation Center, new and old, really important to the community. This is a little bit of the history. This project emerged out of a parking study that you all had many meetings on in 2015, looking at how we could handle or how we could include more on-street parking in our downtown streets. And then it just kind of opened up a larger discussion about what we could do on Fifth Street, this major street in the downtown. We hired a design team using downtown parking revenue funds, working with the DTA. We hired that team, Collective is the name of the team, in the summer of 2016, and then embarked upon a public process in 2016. I think some of you came to our public meeting, and we had a couple other forums where we worked on input for this project. We are now at the point, taking in all that information we received from the community, we're at the point of having developed this preferred concept that we're advancing to you today. We're taking around to different boards and commissions and seeking feedback. We did also have a public meeting on Tuesday night, for the project. So these are some of the teams, not all, some of the groups that we have reached out to. We have gone to, I think, six boards and commissions in the fall, and we're going back to them now, sharing this design concept that you're seeing today. So we have already gone to some of those. We are going to others coming up. And then, of course, working with all the appropriate city departments from Police Department, Fire Department, Transportation, Trash, Recycle Collection, all those different teams, and then stakeholders along the property owners and stakeholders along the street itself. The scope of the project, again, this is similar to a lot of our streetscape projects. These are the types of things that we need to get out of a project like this in developing the construction documents. So we want to make sure we're preserving all the transportation options that are out there today, so bike path and the vehicles, of course, utilitarian, things like delivery vehicles, all need to be accommodated. It's an important street for utilities themselves, so underground utilities. There's a lot of them out there. We want to make sure that we're leaving open the possibility for upgrades and renewals of those utilities on the road, so we have to design this appropriately with that in mind. And then we also know that this is a street that's closed down for a lot of events, so we need to make sure that it is flexible, can convert to a street and back to an event space with great flexibility. And so we've received a lot of input from DTA, ASU, and Police Department on that. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, we want this to kind of step up a notch in what we're doing with our streets and create something that has an even greater reflection of sustainability, and not just environmental sustainability, but like our long-term maintenance costs, those types of things, how the trees perform, all those kinds of things that are important to sustainability. These are major takeaways, not a lot of surprises here on what we heard from the community. You all hear these things too, when you go out and have conversations with the community. We have a pretty well-functioning street today. We want to make that even better. We want to make it more attractive, increase the shade, we heard a lot of. It's one of the busiest pedestrian streets in the city, maybe in the region, probably. Mill Avenue and College Avenue are comparative. So we heard a lot about making sure that the pedestrian space was actually even more ample and shaded. That was really important. We did hear a lot of feedback from the community about utilizing that center turn lane in some sections where we didn't have a lot of left-turn movements, utilizing that center turn lane for other things like parking or landscape.
I'll stop you really quick.
Yeah.
Only because we had somebody come up and ask in regards to the shade increase. Do you have a percentage of shade increase, or do we have a standard? Can you just answer that while you're on that subject real quick?
And Brayden actually knows a lot about this, but there was an urban forest tree canopy study that was done. I think you guys did receive a report on that. We have percentages for every street, every major street, and so we can provide that information to the individual that came up here. Brayden or I can send that information. But this street today is at 13% tree canopy coverage. Our streets are actually one of the least shaded in the region, or in the city, for obvious reasons. So I think the average of our street canopy coverage, tree coverage on streets, is 1%. So this is better than that percentage. We wanted to look at moving this up to 25%, and that's kind of an objective of that study, is to push the city to a greater tree canopy.
I think you answered his question, so.
Okay. Keep going, sorry.
You're good. Thank you.
So these are the, taking all that feedback that we heard from the public, these are the goals that we set forward, that we've been sharing with the different boards and commissions, and that really were the synthesis of the Transportation and Sustainability Commission's efforts to guide this project. So again, reinforcing this idea that we have to have a flexible street that can be an event space, a social space, as well as, you know, most of the time being a street. We wanted to, as a result of the parking, so we wanted to look at adding on-street parking here. So as a way to, we know that there's some parking concerns in the downtown. This is a way to achieve short-term temporary parking with quick access to buildings, so we added, we are showing an additional parking on this project as a goal. We wanted to make sure that we balance the cost of the project with the long-term maintenance and utility needs for the street. And then we wanted to connect well to ASU and connect well to the downtown and connect well to our adjacent neighborhoods. We also want to protect the historic character of the neighborhood to the west. And then finally, I'll just mention, we talked about the tree canopy coverage. We wanted to achieve a 25% coverage on the street, but we also wanted to look at, in complement to that tree canopy coverage, 100% rainfall capture. So working with how we design the street, the drainage on the street to actually collect any rainfall that we get and send that rainfall into our landscape areas. This is the preferred concept. You can't really see it on the screen. You can hopefully see it on your screens. We will do, we have blow-up sections with that.
Speak for yourself.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
She can't see. I will walk you through this.
What's on your mind? Sorry, go on.
The major elements of the preferred concept that we put into the drawings, working with the Collective has put into the drawings, is the items that are listed below. So I will go through those as we go through the rest of the presentation, but again, no big surprises here. Some new things that we're integrating in, like the 25% tree canopy coverage, that goal. But we are talking about some removal of the center turn lane in areas where we think it's appropriate and the traffic capacity has not diminished. And then we're also proposing a pretty significant change in front of City Hall, and then some gateway treatments at some of the major intersections. And I'll go through those in the next set of slides. So we're traveling from west to east. We just want to show you what the current conditions are and then how we're proposing to change it. This is Farmer and Ash at the connection to Riverside Sunset and by the railroad tracks there and the SRP power lines, these two major intersections on the street. This is how we propose to change them. And some of these are typical for all of the treatments that you see along the street. We're looking at increased visibility in the crosswalks, so that's not unlike what we've done on University Drive and Broadway Road, some type of paving material or color or a visible marker that draws out the visibility of that pedestrian experience, a little bit wider sidewalks, additional landscaping, and a median in the center of the road where there is none today. This still allows for the turn movements that all happen at those two intersections. You can see that we also are recognizing the narrower street further west on Farmer Avenue as you get into the neighborhood. And then a little bit of a higher-visibility bike lane as well on this. We're talking about utilizing that green bike lane treatment that we've done in other parts of the city. These are some examples of what those treatments look like in our city today. And the image on the left is an overhead lighting element that we are proposing to introduce at the four gateways. This is sort of an overhead atmosphere lighting. We call it festooned lighting in the plans, and we are introducing that, proposing to introduce that Farmer, Mill, City Hall, and then College. There's some other drawings of that in the future, in the presentation as well. This is the block continuing east. This is the block between Ash and Maple. This is where we would be proposing to eliminate that center turn lane and introduce the angled parking on the side of the road, utilizing that space as well as additional landscaping. So you can see how the street, we would bring it down to just the two through lanes, one lane eastbound, one lane westbound, in this section, adding that additional parking and landscaping on the sides of the road and a little bit wider sidewalk, so making a better pedestrian experience. And then keeping with those, the higher-visibility crosswalks. These are examples of what bike lane with that angled parking could look like, and also landscaping adjacent to angled parking. These are, you know, we would have to go through, we're going to go through this in the construction documents about what this exactly looks like, but something similar to this is what we're thinking. Mill Avenue, this intersection, we are, this is today's conditions, and we are looking at a couple elements here to, for your consideration. One is the overhead date palms with that overhead experience lighting. You can see it in the drawing there. We're also looking at the, there's additional asphalt at all four corners of this street, and I'll show a visual next. We're proposing to absorb that additional asphalt into the pedestrian areas. It still allows for all of the traffic movements that are out there today, with the exception of, we have a proposed elimination of a dedicated right turn lane going from eastbound Fifth Street onto southbound Mill. It's the lowest movement in that whole intersection, whether you're on Mill or Fifth, but we would be proposing to remove that dedicated right turn lane, that's on the post office corner, basically. And that gives us a little bit more pedestrian space on that corner, as well as the corner north, on the north side, northwest corner. So that is one change there. We'd want to test that. I was going to, we have a slide later in the presentation that talks about wanting to test some of these changes that are somewhat significant. So we'd want to test that before we make the final determination. The other elements here is we'd be, again, looking at a little bit, a possible different material or design into the intersection itself, along with the higher-visibility Continuing eastward, any questions? Good. This is actually a visual of the traffic conditions on Mill as we would propose it. Again, no changes to the intersection movements that are allowed today, but we would be considering the removal, as shown in the drawing here, removal of that dedicated right turn lane going from eastbound Mill to south, or eastbound Fifth to southbound Mill. Well, there is a possibility it could be a shared, the configuration today is, on the other side of the street, is that there is no dedicated right turn lane, but it's kind of a shared bike lane, right turn lane. And that's a configuration we've done in other parts of the city. This is some visuals of different type of paving materials in the sidewalk that we would want to consider, bring back to you, some outdoor dining that we see along the street that we want to try and encourage with this project. And then I talked earlier about that, there's extra asphalt at that intersection, so the image on the left of the screen here shows where you have the curb. This is adjacent to the Starbucks patio, so you have the patio, and then you have the curb and gutter, and then you have, there's about three feet there of extra street that we would propose to absorb into the pedestrian area and just have the sidewalk go up to, and the curb go up to the bike lane, as is typical for a street. So that gives us a little bit better pedestrian experience on the street.
You were talking about using different type of brick, or changing the brick out?
We want to have a, as we, assuming we get support for this concept, we want to come back and talk about materials like tree selection and share that with you. We would like to explore, as was done with the Transportation Center, as was done with portions of College Avenue, introducing some new paving material. We want to make sure that we keep enough of the brick that is the character of the downtown integrated into this, but it could be at intervals with other paving materials that could be a part of that, like permeable pavers, et cetera.
And then to that point, you were talking about rain capture, which I love, you know, but what about any incorporation of, through the gutter, or capturing water through that porous material, or using a different type of street, you know, right to the edge of the gutter, so when it does rain, you still have that capturing of that material through the trees.
Yeah, that's a great point, and we are definitely talking about this with, through our sustainability discussions. You can use permeable pavers that the water just goes through and goes into the landscape areas. We want to make sure that we're matching where those permeable pavers are and that it actually is going into those areas. You can also just channelize the water, so making sure that how we design the drainage on the street, that we're sending it through those impervious surfaces into the landscape And then the City Hall block, this is where we have the most significant change proposed. This is current conditions today. Everyone's familiar with that. And we are proposing here to, similar to the block between Ash and Maple, to remove that center turn lane. There's limited left-turn movements on the street, so we would allocate that center turn lane space to the edges of the road with landscaping, additional sidewalk space, and I said landscaping. We would also be looking at reconfiguring the crosswalk that is currently really focused on Myrtle. We keep a crosswalk there, but we want to look at really centralizing the crosswalk experience, to kind of welcome people into City Hall and onto the, into the council chambers into City Hall and onto the deck of City Hall, really try to activate. One of the things we heard through this process is that people really wanted to try and be connected to Sixth Street Park better, connected to the deck of City Hall for future events. So really try to celebrate the fact that City Hall's there and really recognize in that block the importance of City Hall and that experience. So we are meeting with Police Department, we're meeting with Mission Palms to talk about this concept. We'd be proposing that block to be elevated to, similar to College Avenue between Sixth and Seventh, next to ASU campus. We'd be looking at elevating the street up to the pedestrian level, so it's sort of an extended speed table, if you will, and then doing different material other than asphalt in that one section where the street is raised up to the pedestrian level. Questions on that? We also are proposing on this the overhead light experience that we talked about at Farmer and Mill with the date palms, and then possibly reconfiguring, with your support, reconfiguring the parking lot to the west of City Hall to have just one driveway and have it internally circulate, so you can still make all the movements, but you wouldn't be doing it, you know, those driveways today, it kind of operates one in, one out. You do that internal circulation in the parking lot. We maintain the council parking spaces, maintain the ATM access there that is there today, and then also maintain all the delivery service that happens in there.
Councilmember Kewley? So I'm really intrigued by the patio idea, and because that lot is so ugly, it's pretty ugly. And I was at an ASU forum, a lot of students had some ideas. One was intriguing to have a sort of edible landscaping walking tour in Fifth, and you mentioned that that's really prohibitively probably expensive because of all the maintenance of that, maybe not very realistic, but it'd be awesome if there was an area, maybe not there, maybe a different place in the street, where we could have that concept, or there could be some kind of... could be some kind of iconicness about the space, whether it's the kind of tree that's chosen, or, you know, pomegranates, or some kind of edible landscape and that kind of defines that area on its own.
Yeah.
But that's just my idea, I don't know how you guys feel about it.
And that was mentioned at the, that was mentioned at the public meeting. I think if there is a location on the street where this would be appropriate, or a park space where that kind of a concept of an edible landscape or an educational location would be, it would be in this area around City Hall, I think, and that reconfiguration of the parking lot would really kind of allow for that experience to happen. I think it's also something like, it could be an ASU project, it could be something that could be a great partnership opportunity. It's not a big space, but it's something that could be really...
With the EPICs, the engineering projects and community service, yeah. And there could be an opportunity, I know there's plans for all downtown to have pop-up parks and different public art performances, and that could be a space, I know it's going to be small, but it could be a space that would incorporate that as well.
Yeah.
Could be getting your way into Sixth Street too, I think, like to use Sixth Street Park somehow to connect those. It'd be really important to be able to do that.
Okay.
All right. A few more slides, no, that's good.
Yeah, we're almost done.
No, we're good.
Just more images of the types of things that we're looking at. So UC College Avenue here, the overhead lighting. We also think that this particular block is an opportunity to do some of the things that we've done around the community where you use the pavement to kind of tell a story. Historic Preservation Commission, Mayor's Commission on Disability Concern, the Arts Commission, they were all interested in utilizing the pedestrian areas as ways to maybe tell the story of Tempe in and around City Hall. And then College Avenue, this one is the east end of the project, connection to ASU, current conditions. And then here's what we'd be proposing, a little bit simpler, because there's been a lot of improvements down in that area because of the new Grady Gamages building as well as the transportation center. We would be proposing the overhead lighting at this particular location as well as the median treatment that we did down at Farmer. The median that we're showing here does still allow for all the LRT movements as well as the turn, left turns, all the turn movements that's been engineered in there, so we can do it. We think it's, this median kind of sets a tone, is also really, kind of softens the edge going down the street and connects you to the Butte a little bit better and that trailhead that's on the north side of the street. A little bit higher detail on that particular intersection. These are some images of, this is some mosaic work that was done in downtown Glendale, telling the story of Glendale. So just another idea of public art opportunities or storytelling opportunities that could happen in the project, and then just the view of College Avenue. These are our next steps. We did have a public meeting on Tuesday night. We had about 25 folks that came to that meeting. We had 11 comments, all in support of the project, and we actually will, we can send you those comments when the public comment period closes on Monday. And then we would like to, as I mentioned earlier, advance this into, start looking at our construction documents, bring you back details on, you know, some of the tree selection, some of the questions that councilmember Kewee asked, as well as the traffic data after we do the simulation that we're proposing in the fall.
Councilmember Barrow?
Yeah, I just want to first say thank you for the presentation. What a in-depth, it's really looking sharp and good. I remember when we started this conversation a while back when, and we had stick figures and things like that, it's really progressed. No, and I think you've done a great job with the trees, landscape, just incorporating that, the lighting and kind of really taking the best practices throughout the country and utilizing that, so I've been very supportive. I think, and I'll let councilmember Keating probably talk on it, but there probably might be some concerns on Mill and Fifth, just with that traffic flow there, and that could be complicated, so.
Councilmember Keating?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you guys for putting this together. I think it looks awesome. I'm really excited for this. I think it's really going to transform the downtown of Tempe. It's going to change how it looks and feels, and it's going to, I mean, it's going to be fantastic for the city. I do have one concern, and that is you laid out, you know, changes to the streetscape and how they would be essentially traffic neutral today, which is fantastic, but there is a office building going in on the corner of Farmer and Fifth Street, and there also is the Opus Project, which just broke ground not too long ago coming in. So I'm worried about people at five o'clock trying to leave that office, and if they want to get out of downtown area, they can't really go north, they can go south on Farmer all the way to University and then try to make that turn, which would probably be a nightmare at that time of day. Or they're going, or they can go to Mill Avenue and go south, and then not too far are out of the, kind of the congested area. And I'm worried about the removal of that right-hand turn lane right there as a traffic easement feature. I'd definitely like to see some sort of option that keeps that right-hand turn lane there to help shuffle people in and out of the downtown area.
On the fifth and Mill?
Yeah, Fifth and Mill, yes.
Yeah, on the east side of the road.
That's correct.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, too.
East side?
West side.
West side of the road, yeah, I totally agree with that.
Yes. Yeah, that was pretty much it. I'd say, otherwise I worry about people going through the neighborhoods to try to get to University, try to head south, and I think we'll see that happen.
That's great feedback, and we would definitely look at the options for design of that intersection, especially as it relates to the, and we would study those or simulate those as part of the fall test period.
Okay.
Councilmember Granville?
Yeah, I've got a, first off, of course, great job. The presentation that you did to the public was also really great, a lot of good information there. I do have a couple of bits of feedback, not surprisingly. The first one is at the Farmer-Ash location, if you could bring that slide up. Wow, I'm getting dizzy. There we go. So if you go one more slide back, looking at the north side of that street where the bus stop is.
Uh huh.
So you can see there actually is sort of that weird striped zone that looks, I don't know, like a wedge.
Yeah.
And you turned that into, or maybe it already was, a bus stop if you go forward, but it's a bus stop right in the middle of the bike lane, and instead you added sidewalk, where you could have just not added sidewalk and kept that as a pulled-out area, so you weren't actually blocking a bike lane while people were boarding. And so my suggestion would be just don't add sidewalk and instead make that a pullout so that you're not blocking traffic, particularly since I can tell you I've done the bike counts on those corners, and it's comfortably 35 or 40 people going east-west an hour during the middle parts of that day. And just one bus would mean all those people pull into what is now a very narrow street because of the median, because of the middle part.
Can I ask you something on that, though? Can you get maybe, if you're getting some information, check the boarding information on that particular bus, just to see how often it does stop?
Yeah, we will provide you that.
I mean, before we, I think that would be really helpful.
It's not a full bus, right? That's something else, I think.
No, that is a full, fixed route. It's the Route 62, hardy route, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly.
There's also an Orbit too that goes down that way.
There is the Orbit Venus that goes there as well, yeah. So, but it is, my point with saying it's the 62 route is, so we are designing it so that the larger bus can make the turn onto Farmer and that it's accommodated with that stop. But we will look at, councilmember Granville, we will look at the possibility of separating the bike lane from that, from that transit. I mean, that's a, the bike lane stop is something that happens all the time, but given that we are redesigning, we can look at that.
I just, yeah, I mean, and if there weren't extra sidewalk there to play with, I would say, well, it is what it is. But if you've got the extra sidewalks there anyway, I'm not sure really what you get by turning that extra space into sidewalk. You get a little, you know, you get a little less congestion for sidewalk, but a second one is if you go to Mill and, you know, Mill and Fifth. I, yeah, that's perfect. So I can tell you, I am positive that people use the bike lane for a right-hand turn lane when you're heading north-south. And so I don't think, given the number of businesses and the number of things you guys are doing, that curbs everywhere are a good idea, but if there was a curb the last 10, 12 feet, like a little, you know, something like that where the bike lane is, just to make it very clear to cars that while they're waiting in traffic and they're frustrated, they don't sort of do like a mirror check and then pull into the bike lane and say, well, I'm a Mini Cooper, I won't hit anybody's. And again, I understand that for the other parts where there are ins and outs, and you've got street parking, that's totally inappropriate, but at least at those major corners, at least at the Mill corner, the other ones are less of an issue.
You're talking about basically some sort of protected bike lane right at the intersection?
Not followers. Nobody likes followers. But yes, but if it was just like a little curb, and I understand that their issue with street sweeps, which is why we don't normally do them, but if it was only a four or a six foot, like something just small enough to keep people from pulling in there and cutting into the bike lane, I'm sure there's, you know, some creative way we can still get that swept.
Look at that.
I do appreciate that. The next one is at Ash to Maple. Is it, oh, you know what, the one, doesn't really work here. Can you show the really large picture? The long one, the long one that's unviewable.
Oh, okay.
So you can't see it in this photo, but on the far left, where we cross the train tracks, there is a bus stop east of those train tracks, but then there's also a bus stop west of those train tracks. They're within 40 yards of each other, 25 yards of each other, it seems like. And I know from, you know, the discussions that we've had routinely with the bus people, they really don't like to put a bus pullout before an intersection because people pull into the light and they stop, and the bus is stuck in the pullout, and then when the people go, the traffic is now whizzing, and so they can never get pulled out again because they don't have a light to help them. And so we've already got that problem solved here because there's a spot on the north side of the northwest corner, 30 yards away, where you do get the light that would stop the traffic and then the bus can pull out and go. So why we need one on the northeast corner, I really don't understand. Maybe there's a reason, but I just, is there another picture that shows it better? Okay, thank you, I must have missed it.
You're talking here, you can kind of, you're talking the two...
There's a train track there. Oh, there it is, yeah.
Yeah.
So you can see on the far right edge, it's almost off the picture.
Right.
And I just don't know why you would put it there considering that you're, I feel like you're just never going to get out of there, and you could just as well go a little bit to the left.
You know what, I don't know the answer to why we have those two located right there. We will definitely look at whether or not those could be consolidated and the best design. We want to make sure that we're preserving all the good transit access that we have out there today, but...
And it could be that there's a, that there's two different routes, right? That one that goes west and goes up Ash, and then another one that goes west and goes up Farmer.
Right.
So there might be a really good reason for it, I just need to know that. And the last, there's two more. One is, I know you guys had mentioned ride share, I'm really glad to see that you're incorporating some sort of ride sharing. And the last one being is, oh, the palm trees. Do we have palm trees anywhere else on Mill Avenue?
Not on...
Yeah, you would know for sure.
University.
Well, we do on South Mill Avenue, and we do, we have palm trees on Fifth Street in some sections, obviously Mission Palms and some of the private developments further west. The date, these would be the date palms that are, you know, historically agriculturally relevant here.
The ones on Palm Walk.
On University and Palm Walk, yeah.
So I appreciate the cultural side of it, but, and I'm going to assume, I don't want to speak for you, but I'm going to assume that Joel agrees with me on this one, that there's a metaphor and a scheme for all of Mill Avenue, and it tends to be a certain kind of tree. And the idea of introducing a brand-new kind of tree to Mill Avenue that doesn't exist there, I think it's just going to look weird, candidly.
You're talking, you don't have, your concern is really just at Mill and Fifth?
Just at Mill and Fifth. Now, if it's off Mill, but, I mean, so that's right next to the Starbucks, right?
Yeah, it'd be on all four corners, really, or all two sides of Mill.
It just, it would seem very strange to me to walk down Mill Avenue and have palm trees be in front of the Starbucks or anywhere like that. That just seems odd. Oh, and I did have one more that I'd forgotten, and that is, can you show one of the backend parking spots?
This?
Yeah, that's a perfect one. So given the choice between protecting a person on their bike and protecting someone's car, I would go with the person on the bike. And so my suggestion would be if it's feasible, that you move the bike lane on the inside and move the car part on the outside so that the cyclists are closer to the sidewalk and the cars are protecting the cyclists as opposed to the cyclists protecting the cars.
Will we back it into the cyclist lane?
Yeah, because right now, every time someone backs out, they're going to back out into the cyclist, and then...
Back in and hit the cyclist.
Oh, no, you'd put a curb there. You'd stop it, so there'd be something stopping it there so that a person couldn't, you know, park in, yeah, so you'd have some sort of protective thing so that people cycling would be basically where the vegetation sort of is on the right picture.
Might push the cars out into the street.
Well, it couldn't push the cars that far out, because otherwise this would cause the bikes to be pushed out, I think.
They're on the street.
Yeah, and we had a lot of discussions about this. There was, you know, we, the, it really was a discussion about whether or not you wanted a protected bike lane. The street has performed, we feel as a collector, it's different than some of our arterial streets, performed really well with having that bike lane adjacent to the travel lanes, so the travel speeds and the traffic is moving relatively slow.
That's true.
And then, so we didn't feel that it was imperative to have a protected bike lane facility on this particular segment of street in the community. We did want to increase the visibility of it by adding that green, the interval green.
And I love the way you stagger the green, rather than the green the whole way.
Yeah.
Is there any, I mean, I bet, candidly, I've never actually seen what I just described to you.
That was the other reason is...
Yeah, no, I mean, is that even ever, has it even ever been done?
We looked at peer cities, it's not, it's not very common. If it has been done well, we didn't really see any good examples of it. Someone brought it, one of the councilmembers brought up earlier, the maintenance issue, it does create some maintenance issues, and it does create some, you know, cross-pedestrian conflict.
This is common? Have you seen this before? I mean, obviously it came from somewhere.
Well, this is common. The configuration of the bike lane next to the angled parking is common, but the buffered lane on the, you know, on the backside of the parking next to the sidewalk is not as common, is not...
Based on best practices, have you seen any issues with this configuration?
We've had, we've had good results. I mean, what we've seen is, is good results from other peer cities that are doing this. It's a lower traffic accident between bike and vehicle by doing this configuration.
That's good, all right. I'm all right with it. Councilmember Spire, I'm sorry, did you have something?
I did, but I think...
I mean, I know you're over there debating something.
No, no, I, I had something in mind, and then I just saw that Trump launched 59 Tomahawk missiles at Syria and kind of lost my train of thought, but, yeah, no, I think the Fifth Street looks great. I think, yeah, it's, you guys have done a great job, it's very exciting. I think this is going to become another kind of iconic thoroughfare like we talk about Mill Avenue, based on the hard work you guys have put in.
Eric, I would ask you a question. How are you incorporating DTA in the downtown businesses, and, you know, what does that look like, and what kind of involvement have they had through this process?
So they, they are, we have sort of a steering committee, and we have representatives from DTA that have been on that, including their director, Kate Borders. We've been giving updates to their board. In fact, we gave one yesterday, gave them, gave them this, basically this presentation. And then we're meeting with every property owner along the street. There are some that we have missed or haven't been able to contact, but, you know, folks like Mission Palms, Hanover, Starbucks, anyone that DTA, and DTA's been really active in working on this project to make sure it functions well for all of their needs and their merchants' needs. So anyone that they come into contact with, we've been sitting down with them and talking to them, we want to continue that.
I would just say a couple of things, too, in regards to what I heard in, especially the Fifth Street and Mill. I mean, I really worry about traffic, and I know we want to balance that out somehow between traffic and bikes, but the reality of it is, is we're building a lot of different developments for, you know, homeowners, for offices. We have our own parking garage right down the street, so I really am worried if we eliminate any type of traffic capacity, that we should really take a really good, solid look at that, and if there's a way that we can incorporate some safety measures without adding any candlesticks to it, I can really understand how that works. And, you know, and I don't disagree with the palm, I wasn't thrilled about the palm trees, because I don't like palm trees very much, and, but, but if the reason is so you can include that lighting element, I mean, to me, I think that's going to be pretty exciting, and it's just going to really, you know, liven everything up. And the last thing I think is, it would be really great if there's a way that we can, once this gets going a little bit more and we're a little bit more firm in what the design is, to really just let our community know how we're really trying to improve downtown so it is an experience for everybody. I mean, this is a really wonderful opportunity, and we want everybody to be able to come downtown and experience it in their own way, whatever that may be, with their children or their friends, and I think this is going to be something that really will encourage more individuals to want to come downtown, and maybe it's an opportunity for us to really express where parking is, too, because I know parking has always been perceived as there is none in downtown Tempe, and sometimes I think that's just a negative perception. And if there's a way that we could talk of maybe even wayfinding signs within the design or why we're out there doing some marketing to let people know what we're doing, I think that would be really wise for us to incorporate that parking strategy.
Right.
Sorry, councilmember Keating?
So I'm thinking that we got to get this right, and it's an opportunity to kind of go big. Have we explored at all the idea of solar roadways? If not the entire expanse, but sections of it, whether it be bike lanes or the road, because there's a lot of benefits there and there's a lot less maintenance, apparently. They actually can generate energy for an electric car that's riding on them, which is really cool. This is happening... This is around today. I mean, this exists now. And I don't know what the costs are, but there's a lot of, you know, besides aesthetic benefits, there's a lot of maintenance benefits as well, and they don't soften with the heat. Anyway, so have you considered that?
Do you want to say some words on that?
So I think that for the overall sustainability of the street, you want to be able to pick some goals that you really go bold on. And the thing that's great about this design is that Eric and Shelley and the team have done a great job on going bold on water and setting a very aggressive water goal and going bold on tree canopy. You can set aggressive goals for energy. A lot of cities haven't done that with streets, but you're right, solar roadways are an opportunity as well as solar shade structures on parking. Grace Kelly and I are looking at those options for streets and how we incorporate solar into streets. But everything we've looked at thus far is really expensive and very much in beta in terms of what we can accomplish. And so the Sustainability Commission has been working really hard to figure out, how do we feature sustainability features where they really make sense, but also not put untested technologies or really expensive technologies that overburden a project? So I'm happy to continue to explore both solar roadway technology and solar street covering. And we're having a meeting next week on some of those issues with a potential vendor. But in terms of that fitting this concept at this time, we didn't feel totally comfortable doing that.
I appreciate you exploring it, though. That's good. Okay, sorry, Councilmember Coby.
I mean, I realize the whole extent would probably not be realistic, but I wonder, just in the same way that the ASU, the Global Institute of Sustainability, has wind power on the roof, it doesn't really power that many of the computers, but it's meant to... It makes a statement saying, "We are the convener of renewable energy on the Tempe campus." It makes a statement. And if there's an element where either there's an artistic element and a functional, artistic and functional element maybe in front of City Hall, maybe it makes that same kind of statement, especially as we increase our renewable energy goal as time goes on, that we're making a statement that's artistic and visionary.
That's what I was thinking, is maybe it could be something that we would look at incorporating into that educational area, that civic space that we were talking about trying to establish outside of City Hall.
Thanks. All right, good. Is there anything else? I think we...
No, we just want to assure you that we will be back to give you some more details on this project in several months, and we are still planning on doing the test phase of some of, especially the right turn lane, but some of the key changes to the street. We want to simulate that, much like we did Broadway Road a couple of years ago before we launched the construction of that project, and bring back that traffic information, that traffic performance information to you in the fall of this year. So we'll be back.
Well, I think we gave you enough direction. Are you good?
Yeah, thank you.
Crystal clear? All right. Thank you, guys, all very much. Really appreciate it. All right, next on the agenda, setting speed limits. I think we have Julian and Sergeant Curtis are here. They're still here? Are you still here?
Right.
Way to hang in there. Way to hang in there.
On the edge of your seats for this one, so...
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Aronah Savage, and council members for having us here. My name is Julian Dreesing. I'm the city traffic engineer.
Sergeant Mike Curtis from the Traffic Bureau.
And we're here to talk about speed limits.
So I'm going to begin by just quickly going over what we'll be talking about today. We're going to talk about a little bit of background about speed limits, some of the goals of speed limits, the engineering factors that go into setting speed limits. We're going to look for some feedback on study location criteria, and then what that criteria actually results in, in some proposed study locations. And then we'll finish up with some discussion about the process for moving forward in setting speed limits. So a little bit of background, over time, traffic conditions change. And so that could be a change in demographics, that can be a result of redevelopment. Technology is really changing the way our system works, and so it's important for us to periodically review our speed limits and make sure that they're still appropriate. And so the last time we did that was 2007, so we felt, you know, it's about time to take a look at them again. We work closely with our police department. Speed limits are only as good as the people that pay attention to them and use them. And so an important part of that, what our police department uses, is education and enforcement, and they also provide us with crash data that we use to try to make our streets safer. Because the speed limits are in the city code, it does require any changes to go through the city council process with two hearings. So why do we have speed limits? Really, we have two goals with that. Ultimately, it's safety. The speed limits should be appropriate for conditions. An example would be that on arterial street, 25 miles per hour probably wouldn't make sense unless you're going around a sharp curve. Speed limits should also be reasonable. Just having a standard speed limit of 25 miles per hour or something for the city probably doesn't make sense. And then when we're talking about safety, speed is a major contributor in many of those crashes, and even more so is differential. So that's when you have different traffic traveling at different speeds. And so we do the best we can to try to have some consistency on that side. And then the other goal is really driver expectation. Our drivers have an expectancy that there will be consistency and continuity as they're driving through the city streets. Here's a list of a lot of the study factors that we, as engineers, use when we're setting speed limits. I'm not going to read through all of them. I'll just touch quickly on the first one. That's the 85th percentile. We use that as a starting point, so we go out and collect actual speed data. And the idea behind the 85th percentile is that it's always going to be kind of 15% of the traffic that are going to exceed the speed limit, no matter what we set it. We could set it at 100 miles per hour, and there's going to be a percentage that are going to go over that. And so we're really trying to target the largest portion of the population to set that speed limit. So that's the 85th percentile speed, and that's something that's used across the country by professionals and is accepted kind of beginning point. And then from there, we look at these other features to decide if that's appropriate or needs to be adjusted. So this is the criteria. We can't study every street in the city, and so we came up with these four criteria to decide on how we're going to do this, studies and update to our speed limit plan. The first being the high school 35 mile per hour zones. We had a resident speak earlier. And we get that comment fairly often, and we just wanted to give the council the opportunity, if they'd like, to look further into that and see if that's still appropriate. And from a transportation standpoint, we think that anytime we can have the street at a lower speed from a safety, there's benefit to that, but we understand that there's other factors that play into that. And so we're definitely interested in getting your feedback on that. Ultimately, we're really looking at trying to just find those little inconsistencies and discontinuities. Example of that is like arterial mid-block changes. Generally, the street doesn't change from a driver's perspective, so it's kind of comes as a surprise, maybe, that the speed limit has changed at a mid-block. We tend to think that that would happen at the major intersections. And then we added this last point to take a look at some of our recently completed streetscape projects, for example, University and Broadway, and see if those changes had any effect on speeds of traffic in those areas. So based on those four criteria, this is the list of locations, and to the right is a map. This slide shows the arterial locations, and then the second slide shows more the collector or smaller streets.
Sorry, Councilmember Coby?
Maybe to ask this question, but why aren't there any locations on McClintock for that proposed study locations?
I think that the reason we're currently not looking at McClintock is we're going through a process right now to look at what the ultimate condition is for that, and we wouldn't want to make a change and then have to change it again later. So I think... That's not to say that at some point we can't go back. We can always go and relook at these areas really at any time. So we're not including it now, but it doesn't mean that we can't include it in the future.
Because I had a really interesting conversation with David King, who's a geographer and transportation geographer at ASU. And he mentioned that he thought that the most important thing we could do for traffic flow in McClintock would be to make sure that you just have 23 miles per hour throughout the whole light cycle. So you never... Once the light turns, you go 23 miles per hour and not stopping, and that would be the most effective and safe option for both riders and, you know, riders, drivers in terms of traffic flow and also bikers for being safer.
Absolutely. One of the goals is to create that consistency, and what that speed is can be difficult because drivers can only drive as fast as the vehicle in front of them, and they're not always as fluid as that might be. But there is definitely advantage to that, and we can look into that. That would go for all our corridors, not just McClintock. But we do try to set that speed limit to be reasonable and try to move as much traffic. There's obviously times of the day, in the morning and in the evening peak hour, where it kind of breaks down. We just have such high levels of traffic. But we can definitely look further into that study, and I think you did provide some contact information.
Julian, you'll be studying at least in front of McClintock, in front of McClintock High School, correct?
Yes. It's part of our criteria is the high school if the council chooses.
So what direction are you trying to grab from the council? I mean, obviously, the high school speed limits were brought up, and what was kind of the direction or proposal that you guys are going to...
Sure. I'll move... Can I answer?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were...
Like jump right to the end. We're not quite there yet.
No, I'm sorry.
Let's get to these slides, Julian.
Sure, that's a great segue into finishing this presentation.
He already knows what he's got. All right, we're good.
So this is kind of the process that would move forward depending on the results of the studies. So we would develop some recommendations based on those. We would present those to both the Transportation Commission and the city council. Because it is potentially changed to the council code, or the city code, rather, there would be a public hearing process with two meetings. We'd have a heavy education component. We're not out to, you know, the purpose is not to raise money or to write tickets. We'd like to avoid that, so we want to have an education component. And then we'd fabricate, install the signs, and then continue that education component. And ultimately, at some point, they would have to work with our Traffic Bureau for enforcement.
Julian, did you mention streetscapes in there? Only because I know Ernie came up a little bit earlier, and he talked a little bit about the areas that had different streetscapes. I thought that was there.
So, yeah, this is the council direction, really, that we're looking for, is the criteria that we have identified to determine where to study. And so these are the four listed again for you, the high school 35 mile per hour zones, locations of inconsistency, discontinuity, arterial mid-block changes, and then recently completed streetscape projects. So that Broadway Road project would be included in that fourth bullet.
Well, I think it's just kind of... And the one reason is because when you have your proposed studies' locations, you don't really know why you're picking those ones. I don't disagree with the criteria by any means. I mean, I think that's totally fine, but that's why I asked, because I was looking at the end game.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so these locations on the map and listed on the slide and the next slide are a result of those four criteria. That's how we identified the locations circled here on the map and listed.
So with the high school, I mean, it was brought up... Yeah, all high schools, but it was brought up having a fluctuation in speed in that area, unless the speed is consistent at 35 continuously through that area. I mean, is that kind of the process of what you might be proposing, just continuous 35 throughout the area?
I think what the idea behind the high school zones is really to see what kind of compliance we're getting in those areas and see if there's value. And, you know, we would bring that back and share the results of that. We don't really have that information, and so that's why we're studying further. But the concerns that we generally get from the public is, it is 24 hours a day, seven days a week, makes sense. And so we hope with the data that we collect, we can get an idea of if drivers are heeding that and taking that into account, or if there's certain times of the day where maybe that is the case or not. So we don't really know what the result of that is until we collect the data. And then we would obviously want to hear from council, work with all the school districts if any kind of change was recommended.
Julian, have we ever talked about signage location, where the signs go? And I always wondered that because I know we have some inconsistency with speed limits, which certainly needs to be addressed. But is our... Where we locate signs, is that consistent throughout the city?
Probably not. And there's probably room for adjusting some of those. We typically try to... We do follow certain guidelines about spacing and such, but if that's a topic that you guys would like us to look into, we definitely could do that.
It seems like why we're out there working on it, it seems like something we should at least know or have the information about. So that's my two cents. I don't know. Councilmember Coby, I know you had something on that.
So when we look at the study locations, will you be looking at presence and absence of bike lanes? And the same, David King, I had a conversation with him, and he said there's a zone of 20 to 30 miles per hour, and people are hit outside of the vehicle, go from likely to be injured but live, that's at 20 miles per hour, to be likely to be killed, and that's at 30 miles per hour. So will there be consideration which these study locations have bike lanes and don't? Because that could have an impact on what speed limit should be.
Absolutely. So that was one of the criteria, and I know I went through it very quickly, but the third bullet from the bottom, pedestrian bicycle activity definitely plays into that. But we still have to be realistic on driver expectation. So for example, a bike lane on Rural and South Tempe, just because there's a bike lane on a portion of that facility wouldn't mean it would necessarily drop it down to like 30 miles per hour, because we still have to set it at a range that we could get compliance from drivers and still move traffic through the area. So it's a balance. So we try to look through all of these. You know, as engineers, we have tons of things that we analyze, we can't analyze enough. And so here's a sample of those, and we'll work through that through the study process.
And also, sorry, sorry. There are also a consideration for complaints about specific speed. We heard from a couple of residents tonight. How is that incorporated into the discussion? Is there... I mean, do you have a... Keep a log of complaints you have about travel times, different roads from residents? I mean, it's hard that it's more like, that's more qualitative and less quantitative information. But, you know, tonight, we've kind of asked you in a way to consider Broadway because we've gotten a bunch of emails about that. Are there other locations that you've been hearing about that will be considered?
There aren't. I can't really think of any others where we've gotten public comment back, especially like at a large scale.
Are you sure you haven't heard a lot about Rio Salado Parkway? Or anything like that? The Rio Salado Speedway?
Rio Salado Speedway.
Right, yeah.
We have a lot of streets where we have some issues with driver compliance and speeds, and so we're trying to use these criteria to try to narrow it down some.
Will you take tickets... Like ticketing into consideration when you analyze those? Like, are there certain areas that receive more speeding tickets?
It's not currently one of our criteria, but because it's something that we could add if that's something you'd like us to look into.
Well, I guess I think when you're analyzing the speed limit for a change, to just see if that's impacted by that at all, you know, if it's like excessive ticketing in that area or no ticketing at all.
We do keep track for the neighborhood complaints through the Sims unit. When citizens do complain, we do keep those and log those, and those are available for review. So in the study areas, we could provide those to traffic engineering.
Councilmember Granville?
Yeah, first of all, I think that's an excellent point. I mean, I remember when, it's gone six, seven years ago now, when there were the cameras, six, seven years ago now, when there were the cameras. 90% or 80% of all the tickets came from one camera, and that was the one northbound on rural by Rio Salado. I think the mayor at the time said it stuck out like a finger on the chart.
Well, I got one there.
The thing I would add to this is, you know, the schools, I get a lot of emails about schools. I think we all get a lot of emails about schools. It doesn't really make sense sometimes. I would first and foremost defer to the school, right? If the school says, we really think this is a big deal. But I can tell you, at least where I teach, I don't know if I've ever seen anyone slow down for that school sign. And every month or two, there's somebody who sits out there and writes tickets all day long. But I would want to, I think there's a real low compliance. And I bet at 1:00 in the morning, there's zero compliance. So if there's a way to have dual times, if that's sort of a traffic engineering thing, you know, after 9:00 or after 10:00 or whatever the case may be, there's got to be a way to come up with something. I mean, other cities do it, and it seems to be okay with them. So if there is a way to take it a little bit into account, I think it's just not real. It's not an expectation people have when they go by a school at 11:00 at night, even though I understand there are nighttime activities sometimes. The other thing that we've gotten in the way of feedback is the idea of doing some sort of striping in front of schools. Because right now, the only thing that tells you sometimes you're in a school zone is the sign that says, "School Zone 35." And to have some sort of painted something, even on our material, to say like, you know, if you missed the sign, here's why you should slow down. I think that would also probably be a good use of time to investigate.
We'll definitely look into that.
Thank you.
And I would say, though, too, even the, the schools vary a little bit. Like, I know the school you're referencing where you teach is a little bit smaller school, so people probably don't know it's a school sometimes.
No, you drive by it all day long.
So there is a way to marker it. I get it. But I would, I also agree. I think it's really important to let the schools weigh in.
Absolutely.
And see what their thoughts are in regards to that, because they may.
Yeah. If the school says 24/7, I would defer to the school. But if they think that there's a reasonable time at night, you know, and you don't have an issue with it.
We would definitely plan on, if any changes were to result from the study or being proposed, we would work closely with them to see their appetite for that or moving forward, what that might look like.
Any other thoughts for Julian? Judge Curtis? I think you guys have done a great job. It looks like a lot of work, so.
Yeah.
Better start now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up there with the radar gun all day long.
Get out there. All right. Moving right along. A letter to the governor regarding the Tempe Charter Amendment, Proposition 485. I think Councilmember Kubey brought this up, and we have a sample of the letter in our packet.
Yes, we have a draft letter that staff has penned to be sent to the governor upon council approval. So as you all recall, Prop 485 was passed in March of 2016, the same election cycle that Councilmember Keating was elected. And that proposition reduced campaign contributions, basically just to simplify for individual donations, from $6,250 to $500. And over 88%, I think close to 89% of Tempe voters supported that ballot initiative, which went, is supposed to be under our charter. So according to our charter and Arizona Constitution, after the voters ratify and we canvass, and we canvassed and affirmed that vote on March 23rd, there is, the governor shall approve, shall approve an amendment if it does not conflict with the constitution or the laws of the state. So it's been over a year. And the last time we had a charter amendment was our anti-discrimination ordinance that was nine months. And, but this has been over a year, and we have an election to take place in less than a year. And so it's very important to know the rules of the game for the upcoming election for any candidates that may decide to run. And, you know, the constitution explicitly authorizes and gives charter cities the ability to regulate concerns that are local, matters of strictly local concern. And there's a lot of case law that shows that charter cities have real protections as far as elections, because they're local elections and they're a matter of local concern. And also, the city of Tucson did amend its charter previously to limit campaign contributions in 1986, and that hasn't been challenged. So this letter asked the governor politely to respond within 30 days of the letter. And since our elections are coming up, and asked the governor to approve our charter amendment. And so what we're looking for here is a consensus to move forward with the letter. The only change I would recommend is, I think it says, "Very truly yours," as it's here and I would just substitute sincerely or respectfully, but "very truly yours" sounded kind of sweet.
Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Hernando Savage. I have no problem moving forward with this letter. I think it's long overdue. His approval of our charter amendment is long overdue. So let's move this forward. As far as the sign-off line, I would suggest maybe using "respectfully submitted."
I'd agree with that. Councilmember Schbira?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I agree with my colleagues. You know, not only is this something that passed with overwhelming support, but this provision is frankly archaic. I mean, it comes from a time when the population of this state was so small, the governor probably knew most of the people who voted on the ballot measure. You know, this is, this is just, it should just be a formality, especially when something is so clearly a solely local municipal concern. And our own city elections, I can't think of anything that is more clearly a local concern. And so I hope that the governor will quickly dispense with this by approving it, and we can move forward.
All right. Any other thoughts? Otherwise, I think we'll move forward and respectfully move forward. Does it sound good?
Yep.
All right. Very nice. All right. We went right through that. The next item, "respectfully, truly yours." Is it a call to the audience? Is there anyone out there that would like to have a public comment regarding Section 4A or 4B? There is none on 4B, but we have two items for the committee of the whole. Anyone?
We didn't do future agenda items.
Oh, yeah. Is there a future agenda item? I'm just moving right out of that.
I did want to suggest possibly two with your approval. And one is, you'd be pleased to hear this mentioned, but looking at our food truck policy.
Yes. Nom, nom, nom. Can that be the name of the committee?
And knowing that we don't necessarily raise many funds for food truck policy, but I've had a couple.
Committee?
May I have your attention?
Sorry, sorry.
We've had a little, we've had some feedback from some area businesses and, you know, that it's kind of onerous and it's not easy to complete. And we want to maybe look at what our food truck policy is and how we might modernize it. So if there's any, I know we have a really full schedule of issue review, so I don't know when that would be.
Well, I mean, maybe what we could do is if it fits, Andrew, we could put it on a future agenda item. If not, we could at least send out the current policy in a Friday packet, so we have the opportunity to review it that way. And then we can give some solid feedback if we, when we have the opportunity to bring it.
It's only six months old, right?
Yeah, it might be older than that.
It goes quick. It's like.
Yeah, I think it's older than that. But I remember going through it, so.
This guy's old, because Corey worked on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And your second one?
The other thing is, you know, we have three new commissions, and one, the Veterans Commission that you were responsible for, and the Family Justice Commission and Sustainability Commission. And they all have a policy that you can become a member of that commission if you live or work in Tempe. But there are other commissions that don't have that allowance. And I'm thinking about, in particular, the Transportation Commission. It seems, you know, we have so much daytime influx of population that that's a commission that would really benefit from maybe having somebody who has expertise, who may not live in Tempe but works in Tempe. There's a lot of research potential, ASU people who live off, someone's expressed interest in being on the commission, but they don't live in Tempe. They have particular and unique expertise to bring to that, the table, the commission. So I was just wondering if we could look at all of our commissions and just see where we are in terms of that policy and consider a uniform policy. And in some commissions, you want to have a requirement, like the Family Justice, you wanted to get people who are from, you know, NGO in a domestic violence NGO. And so you may not find that person in Tempe. And so one of the reasons we did that is for that reason.
I completely understand. I mean, we did the same thing with the Veterans Commission. I don't know, Andrew, we didn't do, it hasn't been that long ago that we restructured the whole commission. And there was a study done in regards to how we downsized those, which now we've significantly expanded.
We did. We downsized and consolidated, I want to say 2013, I think.
Is that possible to give you some direction to take a look at that and just see what that might look like, and if we can create some consistency moving forward, or at least the.
Specifically looking at whether or not residency should be a requirement for certain commissions.
Well, I think she said residency or working in Tempe, so.
But currently, I think all the commissions, with the exceptions to the one that Councilmember Kubey mentioned, say that you have to be a resident in Tempe.
Sure.
Question would be, would you?
Are we getting into discussing right now?
No, I'm just clarifying what it is you want me to bring back. If you want me to, if you want staff to look at what potential committees we think as staff could be ripe for relaxing that rule, we could look at that. That's what.
And also what that relaxing might be. It might be that they're limited. You can't have more than this many that live outside of Tempe.
For instance, Neighborhood Bicycle Commission, probably not, right?
Probably not.
But maybe other ones, yes.
Part of that, could you look to see what other cities, what some pure cities do for an outlier on that residency requirement or not?
Yeah.
And I would just say, I would just do what's right for us, too. I mean, what we want to do, too, moving forward, right?
Kind of nice to gain.
It's kind of nice to see. Right. Go ahead, Councilmember Schbira.
Vice Mayor, are we, does that mean we are putting them on a future issue review session agenda, or we're not?
Well, I think Andrew's going to go ahead and work through that just a little bit and maybe possibly bring back a recommendation. So we could probably do that in a future.
We would look at this. We would come back with some substantive memo that we presented a future IRS.
Yep.
Councilmember Kubey, did you still want either of those two things on an issue review session agenda?
Well, you said you'd bring it back to IRS in terms of the.
I assume that's why she was asking for it to come back to IRS.
Yeah, yeah, right. But I am confused about the food truck, because it might be, would it be in a Friday packet?
No, no, no. I thought what we would do is just put the policy in a Friday packet so we had it, so we all knew what it was. And then when we're able to bring back the policy to look at, at a future IRS, because I just don't know how long it's going to be till we can actually get it on the agenda. I just know we're pretty loaded.
Our calendaring ends, I think, in June of 2017, correct? Okay. So we don't have any scheduled meetings after that point. So knowing when the next meeting is depends on the next time you come together and decide your calendar. I believe we have some capacity in the June IRS meeting potentially to add a couple of items, I think, ish, no?
Well, I would trust that you would look through that, Andrew.
I use capacity loosely, apparently, maybe not as much as I thought we'd do.
I mean, I think we want to put it on a future agenda item at some point. But I thought it would be good, at least this way, we could at least look at what the policy is right now.
In the interim, we can provide that policy for you right away, so you can review the policy, but with an eye towards putting it on a future IRS agenda.
And maybe with some information of some other policies that have been used, you know, like Councilmember Granville said, in some other cities that have been successful, just to give us some ideas.
With respect to the boards of commissions question.
No, to the food trucks.
And the food trucks. All right. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Sound okay? Are you okay with that?
Oh, okay.
All right. Very good. All right. Now, we're going to move on. Do you guys want to take a break? It says here, I'm supposed to ask you if you want to take a break.
Now, we're super close. We're nearly done.
Yes.
Yep.
No, no break for you.
I just took one. Okay, can I plug?
No break for you. All right. A quick call to the audience. Deb, I see you. Been waiting patiently. Thank you so much. I appreciate, I always appreciate your feedback. So thank you for being here and being patient.
Didn't get my letter done in time, so I had to come in person.
Oh.
I want to thank Joel when he left.
That's because I didn't allow him a break. That was completely on me.
For holding the public meetings and bringing in, the meeting was handled well, and there were very diverse opinions. And so I really appreciate how the meeting went. I like that the preserve is getting into the ordinance. I ask that we, because it's not a preserve yet, Papago Park is not a preserve yet. So there's always this risk that it won't be a preserve. I don't count my chickens before they're hatched. So could we word it to say "natural desert parks and preserves"? Because right now, we only have a mountain.
I might have, I could.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Granville. Sorry.
And maybe somebody else wrote it in greater detail. I thought when I read it, it said Tempe Beach Park, Papago Park, and other preserves.
Well, there's two sections. There's one that is the Beach Park and Rio Salado. And then there's another section that says preserves.
Okay, I thought it named Papago Park by name. I may have misremembered.
No persons shall launch or land a model aircraft within a preserve.
Yes, preserve. Yep, you're right. Anyway. And he's back now.
You missed it. I said, "Thank you very much. I liked your meeting. You did a good job. It was a rough crowd. It could have been, and it was handled very well. I appreciate it." I mean, I shouldn't say rough crowd. It was very diverse opinions.
Good conversation, Deb.
Anyway, pardon?
That makes for good conversation.
Yes, it does. Thank you. I appreciate it. Anyway, so if we could, could say "natural desert park" just in case the preserve does not occur. And that would include Evelyn Holman Park, which I don't think that's in the preserve, but it is a natural desert park. So we do get a lot of, there's an island there that is nesting grounds to a lot of, there's egrets, heron, cormorants, three different kinds of heron, actually, small, medium, and large. And we recently, this year, have osprey. Now, I don't know exactly where they're nesting, but we actually have osprey that fly over the park. So there are areas in the park, I mean, a couple of years ago, or a couple of weeks ago, we had a racing one riding in Evelyn Holman Park. I mean, they go really fast. And I could see where that would disrupt natural animals.
Well, I think we can certainly look into that. I think we know what you're, yeah, what you want to try to consider.
Just for clarity, you're just trying to incorporate Evelyn Holman Park into the preserve?
I'm just, I'm trying to make sure that, number one, I don't want to count my chickens before they hatch. The preserve is not done. It still has a ways to go. I've been attending the parks' meetings. It has a ways to go. So I, until that occurs, if we put in natural desert parks and preserves, that would cover both. I don't know that there are any other natural desert parks.
I was just going to say, I think we'd have to just look and see if that's even really a technical category, or, but we could certainly look into that. That's, thank you, thank you for bringing that up. That's a really good point.
If I can help with anything, let me know. And I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for being patient and staying here all night with us. Only about an hour more. Yes.
Actually, I'll wait till we get to that item. Yeah.
Okay. All right. We are to that item, actually. But I will go ahead. Committee of the whole items now. Joel, I believe this one is yours, the unnamed, unnamed, unmanned aircraft regulation.
Thank you, Council Vice Mayor Hernando Savage. Yeah, so, long story short, and if you guys read the information in your packet, obviously, this has been going on for about a year or more, trying to craft something that was for Tempe, and when we talked about unmanned aircrafts. Obviously, through the process, the FAA and the state have really kind of taken a hold of this, which actually really accomplished what we wanted to do. And with the state and the FAA guidance, it kind of controls, you know, how UAVs can be used, where they can be used at, and how to be used, and all, and in incorporation with the state law. So with that being said, it was really, and we had some great feedback. We, TAVCO took this discussion on, went to those meetings. They voted on a 6-0 against the need for any ordinance. We had a neighborhood discussion. It was very robust, well-attended, and some great questions. And to be honest with you, it really kind of, I think, solidified a lot of stuff when it came down to what the rules and regulations are. And it really kind of also protected the, and I know we're talking about the desert park area, but with the FAA guidance, flying around five mile radius of the airport, you have to go through an FAA approval to fly an unmanned aircraft in that area. So there is guidelines under that. And then state law kind of gets the reinforcement. And just recently, I was in the, for the final four, they had the EOC going on, and I was part of that. And we had some unmanned aircrafts. In fact, where they were holding the concerts, it was weird. One side of the stage, you could fly the unmanned aircraft. On the other side of the park, you could not. And so it was kind of in that five mile radius. So they had one issue, and obviously, they caught them, and they had the state regulations, but the man or the individual was in compliance. And that was about it. So there is, with the state reinforcement, from what I understand, the FAA is not going to enforce this. The FAA is just kind of regulating it, saying yea or nay, you can fly or not in the fly. But the state actually has the enforcement aspect of it. So with that being said, with all that going back and forth, I would suggest that, and I understand trying to protect the deserts, but I do believe still with the FAA guidelines, we're still in that area. We're still in that area, and we're going to comply to do those things.
Councilmember Granville?
Yeah, thank you. So first off, great work. I know this is something you've been working on a long time. And, you know, I appreciate it, coming back and you hashing it out with residents and sorting that out. One or two questions. Number one, is there a way that if we ever, because, you know, drone racing and all that stuff is catching on, and there are people that, you know, that aren't doing it willy-nilly, it's their business, or it's their whatever, right? They do pictures of buildings being built on Town Lake or something. Is there a process where if we wanted to attract an event, or we wanted to have somebody do drones for a commercial purpose, for, you know, the, you know, fly over the lake or construction of a building, where they could get some sort of permissions for that?
Yeah. So, and once again, the tower will regulate that. So it depends on how, who's flying, what the purpose of the.
But right now, this says they couldn't do it at all, because it would be at Tempe Beach Park.
But here's the caveat. So Tempe Beach Park, you can actually still fly over it. You just can't land or take off.
Oh.
From Tempe Beach Park. So I can go across the street and still fly my drone over there.
Launch it at Monty's and fly it over there.
Right.
So is there, okay. So, and I don't want to hold this up, because I know you've been, you've come back once, and I appreciate you going to get some feedback. If you could just, whenever we get it back to council, have some answer from staff, or they can just circulate an email about what would happen if we wanted to solicit some sort of special event at Tempe Beach Park or something like that, how there'd be, if there could be a process for that. And then the other one is, I think the easier solution here is, I tend to agree with the issue related to Papago Park, but, I mean, it's one space. So you could just swap out, you could just name it in the ordinance, right? And that way, you're not worried about it being natural preserve, and what is a natural preserve, or a, like, you don't have to worry about all the weirdness of it, right? A dot PIG is technically a natural preserve, because we don't do anything to it, depending on what your definition is. So I think just name Papago Park right in it.
I think, didn't you say that was already covered in there, or?
Yeah, well, it's covered by the FAA. I mean, the, I'm sorry. Specifically, the five mile radius is going to cover that area. It's going to cover the Town Lake is a no-fly zone, or a fly zone that has to be approved by the FAA. But I think to your point, though, because of what I said, I still can go across the street from Papago Park and fly in Papago Park, but I can't take off and land in Papago Park. So that's.
So I'm confused. So five miles around the air line is a no-fly zone?
It is.
Without approval?
Without approval.
So I don't know my distances too well, but five miles from.
It goes almost to Scaso Road.
Yeah, it's got to be everything.
Right. That's what I'm saying. And south, it goes almost to, I want to say, almost to Quinns Park. It does go to Quinns Park.
Yeah. So I don't think, I don't think this statute does any harm, but I'm not sure what it actually does.
It just basically has a, for anybody who's a drone operator, and it's not going to encompass the kids.
Keep in mind, there's also, keep in mind, there's also a park on Chandler Boulevard. There's that, whatever, like way down by the Chandler Mall, east of the Chandler Mall, there's an airport there, too. So if you take five miles from there, I think we've covered all of Tempe.
So, so it just, but here comes the, what we talked about. You got the.
Yes?
Yeah. You got the drone users, the ones that have the big commercial, or the hobbyists, they have their real nice sized drones. And then you got the ones you buy at the store, the kids use and stuff like that, and they're flying around. They do have the camera ability and to do neat things, but they're probably not the high end, more than likely because of state law. And if they don't, this is where, yeah, they would be required, depending on the drone, and when I say it was the size and the weight of it, were required by, to be approved by FAA to fly in that zone.
If I get like a little plastic one, I assume I don't, I don't have to be outside of five miles of an airport.
No. And it doesn't hit a height or any of that stuff either.
So it's a height, weight, something like that sort of criteria?
Yeah, exactly. So with that being said, then the state law, just basically, and it listed out on the page, and it kind of says nuisance, you're trying to hurt someone, you. and it kind of says nuisance, you're trying to hurt someone, you take your drone, you drop a, you know, whatever, terrorist activity or anything like that, obviously, the state law is going to, is going to take care of that. The hard thing that, and this is through the discussion, is how do you get PD responding?
How do you enforce it?
And enforce it?
You can enforce federal law.
Yeah. So, you know, with all that being said, it's case by case, it's going to, the enforcement's there, if it's actually being witnessed and seen, then they can enforce it and do something about it. Example was the concert down at the Final Four, they saw a person flying the drone, they identified where he was at, and they immediately went to him and said, you cannot fly the drone here. They took it down, that was it.
What, under the federal rule?
Under the federal and state rule, because he was in the flight zone, and he was in those areas where you can't fly drones, because they, the FAA said you can't fly drones in this concert area. They already made it clear at the day of the concert.
Then the statute would then cover a smaller, like, if somebody had done that with a smaller drone?
So with a smaller drone, it would then, technically, that, they probably wouldn't have gotten the FAA approval, little kid's drone, but if they were flying it around and in that concert area, it would still be a no, under state, it would be a nuisance, flying over crowds, whatever they had to say, no, you can't do that, because the state law says these things.
Okay.
Joel, did you ever think you'd know so much about drones?
No, and there's, it was a lot more to go. In fact, Phoenix is actually, as they start with the enforcement process, there's nuances to it, because they go through the state system instead of the federal system first, because of actuality, and the actuality, you're going to get more substance out of the state than you will out of the federal.
So how does PD feel in regards to enforcement of enacting this ordinance?
They were supportive of it, obviously, they know that there are challenges with it, for sure.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I was just pulling this up, and I think Greg might have been doing the same thing back there, but, so five miles from the end of the runway at Sky Harbor actually reaches all the way to McClintock and Broadway.
Are you on the blow up of?
Just to give you some perspective, so, I'm just on Google Maps, they have this tool where you can measure distances, so I measured the distance from the end of the runway to McClintock and Broadway, and it's actually five miles.
Yeah.
So, so that encompasses a whole lot of the city.
As you rotate this way, you're all the way to southern, almost to the sixty.
Yeah, if you rotate around, it includes all of Papago, certainly all beach parks.
Basically, it gives us more leverage.
Yeah, it does give us more leverage, but to incorporate, if they name it as Papago Park, we can take a look at that, and I'll take a look at that to see if that's something that's reasonable.
Any other concerns?
It's all the Quanis Park.
Are there any other concerns with Joel moving forward with the ordinance, that he's got, going to look into the park and see if there's something that we can incorporate? Councilmember?
Sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Great work, Joel. This is great, just relying on your vast expertise. Thank you, and thank you for all the public engagement. I just noticed a couple things about the ordinance independent of the drone, the drone amendment, and one is, it seems, let's see, let's go to section two, section twenty-three, one-ten, number three, it contradicts, there's a line there that contradicts our e-bike ordinance, because right now, what it says, the old wordage says, or the, it says, no motorized vehicle shall be allowed in a preserve. And so that contradicts our e-bike ordinance, which allows e-bikes to be used in a preserve or desert parks, but just doesn't allow the motor to be engaged. So you can ride an e-bike, you just can't engage the motor, you have to just use the pedal assist. Is that, I don't know if we want to.
Or air park.
Or clean it up?
That's another conversation.
No, I know it is, but if we're going to move this forward, we might as well make other changes to update it for.
Well, maybe the, maybe the, maybe it's not on the agenda, but maybe it's, hey, why we're, if we move forward with updating the ordinance, we should just make sure it's all completely updated with other things that we may have changed? How do we? Sonia, is that possible?
Yes, it certainly is. I'm taking notes of your concern, and we'll definitely address it through our office.
Fantastic, that will be great.
And could I make one other point that on, let me go back to the section, it is, section one, section twenty-three dash forty, prohibitive activities, and it's five, it says, no person shall use any water source, blah, 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 for animal swimming or bathing. And I know we're talking a lot about revitalizing our parks and having animal washing stations, and perhaps having a swimming feature, you know, so it seems to be like that, I mean, we could always revise that later, but I didn't know that we prohibited.
This is designated for such activities.
What?
It says, except that place is designated for such activities.
Okay, that covers that. And then just incidentally, the one above it, you're not allowed to ice block or sled in your parks, is that?
I've got no warning on the ice blocking. Let me tell you what, they take that real seriously.
I'm not happy now. Well, I think really, honestly, whenever we, whenever we do any changes to an ordinance, we should always be able to review it and just make sure that if there has been some changes, that we're just consistent.
Especially about motorized vehicles, because that's in contradiction.
Any more questions for Joel? Are we good to go ahead and move forward and look about Papago Park and Evelyn Holman Park? Okay? All right, that sounds good. We'll be seeing that soon. We're going to just move on to our next agenda item. Joel?
Yeah, okay.
Burchett Park.
Burchett Park, so, from the last council meeting, we talked about Burchett Park on the possibilities of what could happen to it as it relates to the streetcar coming around the corner, and it really kind of ties in well today. I mean, obviously, it was brought up even by our former mayor about, you know, what and how iconic damage is in the structure and the architectural design, and having cables there and stuff like that. This kind of coincides with that a little bit, is more of the enhancement of that area, and then using what we know we can use as impact fees from the development around that area to help that park really be enhanced. And one of the thought processes, as we tear up streets, and as we start to put the streetcar in, the opportunity to work on a park is also there, so you're kind of taking advantage of what's going on in that area to lessen the nuisance. And in addition to that, yet, we have a potential opportunity to have a park that's somewhat utilized, and to incorporate parking, and then to incorporate possible designs with a minor street configuration for traffic flow to possibly make it even more effective and better use of the land. So, you know, from the last council meeting, it was suggested that we could probably, you know, get by with about $10,000, maybe $15,000, just take a look at the design to see what is actually there. It wasn't clear on the council, from what we're gathering, or what I gathered, I thought the direction was to do that, so that's why it's back here tonight, but to actually just kind of say yes through the parks, or through Public Works, they could take some funding, and possibly about $10,000, $15,000, just to really take a good, hard look at this, look at the designs, look at the options that are out there, and get a neighborhood feedback on it. And I think with the timing and the streetcar, I would not want to miss that opportunity, and just asking for the council for that approval for that money to go that way.
Questions? Anyone? Councilmember Granville?
So, I don't want to be the buzzkill on this one, but I, I, yeah, I struggle with this one, because I remember, we've had, I've had a couple instances where I've been on council, where it's like, well, we're not spending money, we're just doing a study, and then when the study comes back, it's worded by the staff presentation as if we are moving forward, and they're showing it in a budget, and they're doing stuff, and it's like, whoa, we just wanted to see what it looked like. And so I'm a little gun shy at this point, of having had that happen two or three times. Additionally, I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, I didn't see that you did do neighborhood feedback yet, and that was one of the things that we'd asked in our last meeting.
Right, and from what I'm gathering, I think the neighborhood feedback was going to coincide with the possible design concepts of what the park could look like, so that they can have neighborhood feedback on with.
Yeah, so that, so my concern with that is, once we show pictures, it creates expectations. And so my preference would be, and I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, first, go get, talk to the neighborhood without drawings, so that you're not expectation setting, because if they see a drawing, they're going to think like, oh, we're seeing a drawing, it must be moving forward. And then if they say, you know what, yes, we'd like something, and, you know, maybe all you've got is 10 bullet points of what they want, then I would feel a lot more comfortable saying, okay, now that we know that the neighbors are interested, now let's talk about what they might be interested in and what it might look like.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, I kind of felt like when we created the work group, we were saying we wanted to do something there, and I actually don't have as big a concern as to go, going to the neighborhood and saying, you know, here's some ideas of some things, and we want to see what your thoughts are. I mean, I don't know. I realize we hadn't taken a vote on, you know, dedicating resources or making renovations in the park, but we did, I think, create the work group, at least from my perspective, under the idea that we did want to do something there, and if we come up with some designs and take it down and get their feedback, I'm comfortable with that, my perspective.
Councilmember Katie?
I agree with Councilmember Shapiro on that aspect of it. I think it would be hard to get neighborhood feedback without some of the conceptualization of what the possibilities may be, seeing is believing, a lot of times, and I think we just kind of had that discussion around the on-wire, off-wire aspect of the streetcar. You know, I think that, you know, the mayor said it himself, that if people really saw like what it was going to look like on mill, that they might not have an objection to putting it in that parking lane. So I think that it would be, make sense to move this forward as planned.
Did you have anything?
I just think it's a great opportunity, a streetcar, too, a great opportunity to look at it at the same time, and we shouldn't miss that opportunity.
I guess I will just say, I don't disagree. I mean, I think it could be something really phenomenal, and I think we just have to know what the feasibility is. I have no idea, I mean, that park has been really underutilized as long as I can ever remember. My only thought would be is, I know it's going to come out of, even it's just $15 for the design in some way.
$15.
$15, $15.
Let's do five of them.
Don's got some really good contracts. It's only $15, but I'm just wondering, is, are those dollars already allocated for something else, and are we line jumping at all to make sure that, I just want to make sure that we're not funding something to fund this? And if we are, what is it? Because I think that we should at least take that into consideration.
And Donna, if you want to, just, if you can speak briefly on the possibility where that might.
I think it could be, I mean, I think it could be something really phenomenal, especially with the streetcar coming. It'd be great.
Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Don Dessler, Public Works Director. The way the memorandum was written from the working group, this was to use, recommended, I believe, to use park impact fees. Am I correct with that, I believe? So park impact fees, we collect them, we have about $300 and some thousand of them collected. In this year's current adopted CIP, none of those are allocated to any projects. They need to be allocated specifically to certain kinds of projects that are included in the IIP. Burchett Park would qualify under the rules associated with park impact fees. In next year's CIP, so the draft CIP that Ken Jones has been presenting to you on behalf of the city manager, there is a project, I don't recall the exact name of it, but it identifies park impact fees as one of the sources of funding, and it's that recreational value one. So under the idea that you would be looking at recreational value or doing something with Burchett Park, that would be another way that you could do it. Really, the two ways, if you use park impact fees, would be wait until the draft CIP that's been in front of you goes through its process and you vote on it, or direct staff to come back with some way to, the language to allocate money from fund balance, or, well, fund balance, essentially, spending authority and fund balance to fund this project, and it would have to happen in a regular meeting.
What did you just say?
Thank you. There's two ways that you could access park impact fees this year. Well, one this year and one next year. One way would be to work this through the park, the CIP process that's in front of you, and there's a project that's in there that has park impact fees in it, and this project could qualify under that project.
You're talking about next year's.
Yes, it's July one.
So you're saying, right now, we have $300,000 that are not allocated for anything in the budget, but are they earmarked for a project for next year?
They're earmarked for parks, future park IIP projects.
But not the whole $300,000, so the capacity to.
Be used in a variety of different ways, as long as it's in the IIP.